Just say something Charlie or?
Hi, Eleni.
Hi. How are you?
So, the Board Development Committee suggested that we have some more training on the MPO function of the RPC. And so, we're going to do, you know, two or three sessions on it. This is the first one. So, a little introduction to the MPO function. And Eleni and Christine and Peter, I think, are all going to do pieces of this.
Yeah. So, welcome everybody for this first session of the MPO training. This is our thought about the topics that we want to cover for the two or three sessions. And we are very much open to suggestions. If you have a topic that you want us to, you know, like, present, please let us know at the end of this one or any time. So, we're going to touch upon the authority responsibilities of the MPO, the role of the MPO board, and talk about the larger context of the transportation planning and decision-making in the metropolitan transportation planning. And then, we're going to end up, we're hoping to have like the third session very specifically about the work that we do here at the RPC, our work program, and just focus on that for just that last one and have a number of staff come and talk about their specific expertise within the organization. So, this is the agenda for today. We're just going to start very high level, talking about what is an MPO? Why do we exist? What are the responsibilities of the MPO board and the role of it, as well as the role of the staff? And how do we do our work? And just, this is kind of our thinking. Please feel free to just jump in. I pretty much hope that this is going to be a discussion and not just a presentation. So, that would be really wonderful if you do that.
Since this is just such a highly attended briefing session, are we going to make this presentation available on the website?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely. We'll do all the presentations available on the website. And also, you know, just before we actually start, maybe we should just go around and do a round of introductions because I do see some new faces here. So, maybe we can just say our names and affiliations and something like that. So, Mike, will I start? Sorry.
It's okay. Let's follow what's left. Mike O'Brien from Wunneska.
Yeah, Charlie Baker, the Director of the RPC. Rob Fish, the Alternate from Burlington.
I'm Jim Donovan, Representative from Shawah.
Jeff Carr, Representative from the town outside the village in Essex.
Christine Forts, CCRPC staff.
Eleni Churchill, CCRPC staff.
Dan Karen, Essex, Joe Chidna.
Barbara Elliott, Trenton.
Yeah, from Evans, Jericho.
Wayne Howe, Jericho, Alternate.
And Amy Bell from VTранs.
We're going to go back.
Regina Mahoney, Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission.
Jason Schrest, CCRPC staff.
Marshall Distel, CCRPC staff.
Bernie Hare, CCRPC staff.
Peter King, Regional Planner.
Tom Eaton, hopefully the Axy killer.
The latest victim. Welcome.
Welcome. So, what is an MPO? That is a very, you know, high level, what is an MPO? It's a forum for collaborative and comprehensive transportation planning and decision-making in the metropolitan planning area. That's what the slide says. The metropolitan planning area in Vermont, it's Chittenden County at this point, we're the only MPO in the state that meets the requirements of an MPO. And we're going to talk a little bit more about that in subsequent slides.
Does it include Buell Score?
Does not include Buell Score. Thank you so much. Thanks for the clarification. A little bit more detail about the MPOs, I think we just covered the first bullet already. The important thing about that first bullet is that the MPO is governed by representatives of our municipalities and local officials. So, the, on the MPO board, you have representation from all municipalities in Chittenden County except Buell Score. We have Buell Score on the CCRPC side, of course. And we also have representation from state agencies as well as federal agencies and some of our other partners like GMT, which is the Green Mountain Transit, our Transportation Authority in the county. So, MPOs are mandated by federal legislation and the governors of each state are required to designate the MPOs for urbanized areas more than 50,000 people, which we, of course, meet here. Yes.
So, how, I always wonder how the actual designation of the urbanized area is met.
With the census, every census, there is redesignation of MPOs. And, you know, so the area of the MPO can shift? Is that your question?
Well.
Yes, but like why are they going to be transferred or move over into another county in some of those towns, especially north where they're getting more populous?
That's a possibility in the future.
That's a possibility.
I know, I know it's always been a possibility, but I don't understand the mechanics of where.
So, the Census Bureau defines the urbanized area. We have about 110,000 and, you know, if you think about, I don't know, I always say about where the sewer systems run, but, you know, and plus Colchester. But, you know, down to Shelburne, up to Colchester, out to Williston, maybe Richmond, I can't remember if Richmond is, might be, might be a little separated from Williston enough that it's outside the urbanized area. But, so it's that area, but in addition to that, though, there's a second process that happens at this table where we designated the area that we want to do planning for. So, that's how we got out to the county boundary, excluding Bold, or I'm sorry, not Bold.
Buell Score.
Buell Score. That's, that's what I meant, the other B one. So, there's kind of a two-step process. And so, there is, and the last census, the Census Bureau created a rural separation between Colchester and Milton. And so, they're not contiguous, they're not part of our urbanized area, they're called, Jeff, help me, what's the?
Cluster.
An urban cluster.
An urban cluster, thanks. So, it's possible if that area between Colchester and Milton fills in, and then that might even extend over the line into Georgia, it would complicate things around this table a little bit to maybe involve Georgia or something and, and maybe goes all the way to St. Albans at some point, but that hasn't happened yet.
And it's dynamic, too, because we were worried that, that the, there was another part, White River Junction, Lebanon, New Hampshire was growing, was going to be, so that didn't happen last time, but we've got another census coming up. Then, depending upon how population thresholds and other definitional thresholds move, we could end up with a second MPO in our area.
Right.
And to your point, Jim, like the third bullet down, it talks about that some MPOs, they can be multi-jurisdictional, that goes across county borders as well as state borders. So, yeah, and, and a lot of them have very different organizational structures. Some of them are standalone MPOs, organizations like we used to be before the merger with the, with the RPC. Some of them are part of DOTs and some are just part of planning agencies. So, very different MPOs out there. There are more than 400 MPOs. I know that a number of staff tried to figure out the exact number of the MPOs, but we couldn't come up.
Either 408 or 420.
408 or 420. So, this is a map. I know you can't really see it, it's just each state has at least one MPO. But as you can see, there is a cluster of MPOs where the population centers are, east and west coast and in the south.
There's about 160 that are smaller than us. We think of us as being really small, but there are a bunch that are smaller. And the largest is 18 million in Southern California.
We're one of two states that only has one MPO.
That's one, that's one in Portland there and that's the only one in Maine. I'm just looking up north.
Portland has.
They have more than one.
They have more. Yeah, they have more.
Sorry, I was just saying, we're one of two states that only has one, us and Hawaii.
And Rhode Island.
Yeah.
Rhode Island, the whole state is the MPO.
One county, one county, one state.
Yeah, that's a smaller state. So, now Christine is going to go over the history. Do you want to, you want to drive?
Yeah, I'll just take this.
I want to just do this.
All right. It's not going to cooperate.
Why don't you just sit over here?
No, you stay, that's good. All right. So, I just wanted to talk about why MPOs exist, and I think really the best way to do this is to go back a little bit in history because that's, it's, MPOs are very much an evolving organization that happened over time and really starting, like land use planning also in the United States really kind of got going in the early 1900s when there was really a lot of urbanization. Cities were really growing and there led to a lot of conflicts between land use and transportation and not a lot of planning was happening at that time. After World War II, there was also a rapid suburbanization. So, roads were going out, they were creating these mazes, people were not necessarily happy about that. But for transportation, the time that really got it going was the construction of the interstate highway system, which started in 1956. 41,000 miles of interstate was set to be constructed in the United States. And I think a lot of that was kind of an engineering exercise, connecting A to B, not a lot of thought about planning, about communities. And there ended up being a lot of negative feelings about where those were going, going through urban areas, going through neighborhoods, disadvantaged communities and all that stuff. So, really, there had been organizations similar to MPOs since the early 50s, but they didn't really, they were kind of not, didn't have a lot of authority. So, you can switch it, yeah. Excuse me. So, it was really in the Highway Act. So, the first thing that really happened for MPOs in the Highway Act of 1962 was this idea that we call three C's. So, it's, it made federal highway aid available to areas over 50,000 people contingent on establishing a continuing comprehensive transportation planning process carried out cooperatively by the state and local community. I wanted to read that so I got it clear. But, so the two things that happened is this, this recognition of wanting to have planning in cities, so that, that number of 50,000 people. And also to say, okay, if you make this organization, if you plan in this way, you can have some money. So, you know, so the, the states that already had planning organizations and others that didn't have them were trying to make these organizations so they could get some federal money, which was pretty good. But it was really in '73 that MPOs became required by, by the federal government, they said they must exist. And, you know, from that point, there was a lot of incremental changes, it really changed over time, increasing authority of MPOs, really, this dedicated funding source was a big deal. So, I said before that federal planning funds was given to the MPOs, but then around in the mid-'70s, this point, this half percent of the federal money, so a specific funding source was made available, so there's money. And then also this idea that the projects had to be in a TIP, Transportation Improvement Program, in order to spend federal funds. So, that really said, okay, DOTs, you have to pay attention to these organizations. So, it would be great to say that that was where, you know, MPOs took off and everybody listened to us, but it kind of didn't exactly happen that way. During the Reagan era, things really pushed back a little bit, MPOs became less important, less money, the federal process just really rolled back. So, it was when ICE-T passed in '91 that things again got really, really rejuvenated, I guess. And at that time, added more money, more authority, and, and a big thing that happened then that we don't have to deal with here, we can be grateful for, is that it tied air qual, tied transportation planning to air quality funding, and that's transportation conformity, and we can forget we heard that because since we're in attainment with Clean Air Act, we don't have to do that. But it's a lot of effort for larger MPOs to do air quality modeling. So, the structure that was set up with ICE-T really continued and the transportation bills that have happened since then, MAP-21 set up this process of performance measures, which we're going to talk about later, we have been talking about and we're going to talk about later. This slide is actually one giant run-on sentence in the federal regulations because I guess the federal government felt that we should put everything in a single sentence as to what the MPOs are supposed to do. So, yeah, so it's everything, we're supposed to, we're still supposed to do this three C process, that's remained since the very early, since the 50s. It's got to be performance-based, it's got to promote safe, efficient development, management and operation of a multimodal transportation system, has to serve mobility, has to serve freight and people and economic growth and resilience and fuel consumption and air quality. So, yeah, that's a lot. And we have to work together. So, that's, that's ultimately what's come out of this, is that we all have to work together, the state, the transit operators, we have a public involvement process that we're required to do, we have to have an IT, intelligent transportation systems, infrastructure, we have to have elderly and dislabeled program, I mean, there's just all these programs that we have to do, the TIP, the STIP, we're going to talk about this a little bit more in the other sessions and.
Everybody knows what the STIP is, right?
The State Transportation Improvement Program.
The State Transportation. Ours is the Transportation Improvement Program. And unfortunately, Tom, for you, it's only the municipal members that are part of the MPO, the organizational or the, or other people that are part, that represent groups as part of our RPC, they weren't happy to sit and listen, but they don't vote.
So, the MPO structure, you know, this is the board, there's not a lot of specifics in the federal regulations about how the structure of the MPO is. For larger areas over 200,000, there's a little bit more definition, but generally, they have a policy board, they have some advisory committees, a director and staff. And we have to have a written agreement with the state and transit providers, so detailing how we're going to work together.
And we do have that in on our website, we updated that like a couple of years ago, maybe.
And this is, this is, this is just a slide that talks about, that just tries to show in a picture format, the groups that we work with and, yeah, we all work together.
Peter, is that you?
Sure. I'd like to make a comment, though, before proceeding with the slide here. I know there are some new members around the board here. I want to give you a word of encouragement and not be too discouraged, what you're going to hear today can be pretty complicated, complex, convoluted, overwhelming, but we do have some very veteran board members here that I think you ought to tap into, one of you, Jeff Carr, Mike O'Brien, who've been around the table for quite a few years, and can probably attest to how long it might take to feel comfortable, what the learning curve might be to figure out all this stuff. But don't get discouraged because there's a lot.
And feel free to ask any questions, really. We're very happy to talk to you, we're very happy to work with you to, in any of your issues, so.
So, to do a little comparison between the Regional Planning Commission and the MPO, Christine and Eleni already talked about some of this stuff. Regional planning commissions are creatures of state law, they're established under state statute that goes back to the 1960s. They're, they exist all over the state of Vermont, 21 in Chittenden County, there are a total of 11, I believe, bottom left says that. MPOs, on the other hand, are creatures of federal government. And we've talked about the threshold to gain, to become an MPO, 50,000 population. The 1980 census, the urbanized area population of the Burlington area exceeded the 50,000 threshold, so an MPO was born, so to speak. The organization itself got founded in 1983. It was appended to the Regional Planning Commission at the time, it had a separate board, but there was one staff, the Regional Planning Commission. It did expand in 1997 to the entire county, should go back. The urbanized area at the time was just around Burlington, we included most of the urbanized areas just around the city of Burlington, but all the rural towns from Westford and Underhill, Jericho, Bolton, et cetera, were not part of the organization. But in 1997, they all did join, countywide, it was an MPO. The two organizations went through some issues back in the late '90s, they separated politically, organizationally, staff, but then came together a few years later. We remarried back in the, in 2011, so to speak, so we're now one big happy family, hopefully. We already pointed out 400 MPOs in the US. We're the only one in the state, as Charlie pointed out, only Wyoming is the other state with one, a single MPO. I think you said it was Wyoming, right, Charlie?
Wyoming and Rhode Island.
And Rhode Island.
Anyways, the Regional Planning Commission slide, there are 11 around the state. Most of them are based on county lines, the one up in the Northeast Kingdom is three counties, but most of the boundaries pretty closely follow county lines, but there are some exceptions. A little bit about the whole organization of the Regional Planning Commission here, the organizational chart, Board of Directors, you're all going to be members of the Board of Directors here. They do have an executive committee, a subcommittee of the Board of Directors that meets monthly. There are two committees, the yellow ones to the left and right there, that are subcommittees consisting of board members only. Board Development deals with recruiting members, holding annual elections, that sort of thing.
We're commissioners, right?
What did I call you?
It says Board of Directors, but we're actually commissioners by our, by our bylaws, right? We're commissioners.
Get up the bar.
I don't think so.
I'd have to check.
No.
Yeah. We may jump back.
Board of Directors?
We may jump back and forth.
Yeah.
I thought we were commissioners.
You're a commissioner.
Yeah, we do jump and go back and forth.
We do, we use both terms.
Okay. Anyway. I don't know the source of this. Board of Directors sounds so corporate.
That was definitely the MPO term, right?
I think, it was, that was the MPO term.
Maybe we did get to the Board of Commissioners in the update when we merged, but.
This chart, this chart did come from the, I think, the manual for the board, and I did want to point out that.
The MPO board?
That the clean water, that bottom square, I put, my great artistic skills, I put that in there.
Has anybody updated the MPO board training thing recently?
It has been updated, but not recently.
Yeah, we did that after we merged.
We should do that because we have so many new members. They really need to understand the delineations and the responsibilities between their RPC responsibilities and their MPO responsibilities because even this great food that you're serving tonight wasn't enough to get some of our new board members here.
That's a meal.
What's that?
Got some of the old ones here.
Well, we're all. We all, we all could, we all could use a refresher course in this.
So, to finish with this, there's a finance committee as well to deal with all things money related to the organization. Christine pointed out that Clean Water Committee kind of she was stuck in underneath, couldn't fit, but it would be equal to the other blue committees. Unified Planning Work Program Committee, it's a group that meets usually in the winter and spring to talk about and come to some recommendation on what the task we will be working on in this subsequent year. The Long Range Planning Committee is usually only meeting when we're updating our long-range plan with its regional plan, metropolitan transportation plan, they'll meet for the two or three years we're developing that and take a couple of year hiatus. The Planning Advisory Committee and the Transportation Advisory Committee are two standing committees that meet pretty much monthly. The Planning Advisory Committee consists mostly of municipal planners, planning staff, and the Transportation Advisory Committee, who also meets monthly, public works directors, town administrators like Brian and Barbara, and town planners as well. And they meet monthly to talk about transportation issues. Most of what comes through the MPO process will come through that Transportation Advisory Committee as well. And Clean Water is a newly established committee this year with all the water quality issues.
Before you go off that.
And it does meet monthly, too.
Back in the earlier requirements, they talked that we need to have a Citizens Advisory Committee.
I don't think it's a requirement, I think that's.
The previous slide said it was.
It's a Transportation and Citizens Advisory Committee, and I think what happened here is that the, it got, it got merged into the TAC together, is my sense.
It didn't mean that it has, that was just, it said that many MPOs have.
Okay, so we don't have to have those.
No.
Okay, I read that, that we have to have.
And we only have a fixed group of standing committees, we bring ad hoc committees together, but our whole deal was we only have a certain number of standing committees and ad hoc committees can come and go.
Right.
Based on need. But I'm, I'm thinking Clean Water Advisory Committee is going to be more like a standing committee.
That's in the bylaws now.
Well, which we're going to act on, or we did act on that.
Yeah, we added them to the bylaws a few years ago. But I would say, at least my experience with MPOs, most of them do have a Citizens Advisory Committee that, you know, gives you that other perspective.
The UPWP process is very citizen-driven, so it's, it's.
It's also, I think, just, the other thing that I found coming here is that because you're all local governments, that it was more grounded locally here than, you know, where I worked for, counties were at the table, you know, I mean, working in the Philadelphia region before coming here, there are 367 municipalities, but there were only nine board members for the nine counties. So, having that extra layer of citizen committee allowed more engagement that I think occurs more naturally here in Vermont because.
Governmental structures are different.
You know, to the citizenry, so.
We don't have county governments, except for a couple.
Exactly. Anyway, the key responsibilities of an MPO are these, in fact, I'd say the top three bullets are the main ones. We have to develop a long-range transportation plan every five years, looking out 20 to 25 years. We just completed it recently, for those who are around the table, we adopted a plan in June, I believe it was, Regina, correct me if I'm wrong, and, and we'll have to revisit that. We'll start that another couple of years. We have to do a transportation improvement program, which is simply a list of all the agreed-upon projects that will receive federal funds over the next four years. And it's something we very closely coordinate with the Agency of Transportation and we update it annually and sometimes amend it monthly. In fact, a very common activity at the board level related to transportation will be to consider amendments to the Transportation Improvement Program. It may be the most obvious transportation-related activity that you undertake. The third bullet, Unified Planning Work Program, it's simply the list of everything we intend to do in the next year. And it's a list that might be, has 90 or 100 tasks in it, it's pretty intimidating, more than that, okay.
Better not to count. Might be closer to 190, but.
Closely tied to funding sources.
Yeah. And it's something we, we update every year. And the last part is the Public Participation Plan. This is actually a new wrinkle in the federal legislation that came about, I think, a few years ago. MPOs have to have a public participation plan identifying how and who we involve in our process. And it's something we have to update, but not on any regular basis. We adopted our last one in 2014, I think 14 is the date on that.
There were minor edits, not a year.
Okay. All right. So, those are the main things. I would say, being a board member, 90% of the transportation-related activity that you will consider or take action on is going to come up under one of those top three bullets and most of them under the second one. All right. So, a little bit about how the decision-making process unfolds. The staff might develop something, we'll go through a public process to do that. We do employ consultants quite a bit on specific projects, sometimes we don't. We'll do some technical analysis, evaluate things, eventually we'll come up with a recommendation that we'll take to our Transportation Advisory Committee. Kind of the normal process, it's what the transportation. It's what the Transportation Improvement Program goes through. It's what the UPWP goes through. The TAC will review it, maybe make some changes, most likely not, make a recommendation to the board, and that's the second bullet. After the TAC reviews things, it goes to the board, and we ask the board to take action. And if history is a guide, the board has pretty well-respected most recommendations that have come from the TAC.
I was just thinking about other things that go through this process. We sometimes have, like, specific topic, transportation topic plans, park and ride plan, or a bike ped plan, or something like that, that are kind of supplement more detailed ITS plan, that are more detailed than the broad transportation plan, that also go through this process, recommendation to the board.
The other thing I think that's important is this organization and on MPO business is heavily driven by committees. That's why we want to have not only actual board members that are sitting on those committees, but we also encourage alternates to participate on them, because if you're an alternate, you can actually have an impact on the decision-making by participating in one of the committees.
Yep, very much. Just some things to consider. If you're a new board member, when you come to the table and a transportation-related item is on the agenda and we're asking you to make a decision on something, things to consider in that decision-making process. This is kind of generic to all MPOs, but. And the second one is what Jeff is referring to. You know, very often, everything pretty much goes through a subcommittee process. A recommendation will come up to the board. So that's a very important piece of the process, and to listen carefully to do that. But it looked at the bigger picture. In our long-range plan, the ECOSS plan just adopted, we have a vision for the region. So think about what that vision states in making your decision. We encourage, solicit, and sometimes get an awful lot of public comment, so listen to those public comments, especially if they're from your community, and if your local government has particular issues and points to make, you know, probably, most of you are going to be representing a community, so whether it's Jericho or Essex or whatever, listening to the local government and bringing that view to the table is pretty important. Consider the environmental, economic, and the operations on the transportation systems impacts. Funding is a big issue when it comes to the Transportation Improvement Program. We know how much money we have available. We have to program and that, the projects. Considering cost-effectiveness as well when it comes to specific projects. Federal, state, and local regulations are pretty important, obviously. We operate under them, so being aware of them is very important. And the last one's pretty important. I think sometimes we hope we bring information to you that's complete, been thoroughly vetted, and then you can make a decision on the information that's been provided, but if you feel there's not enough information, always ask for more. I think it's a rare event, but if it does occur, please ask for it. And I think, you're going to talk about the staff?
Yeah, just finishing up here. So Peter talked about the role of the board. This is the role of the MPO staff, and we did talk a little bit about this, you know, through the slides. So our role here is, of course, to provide information and technical support to the board and to all the advisory committees, usually the TAC, but sometimes we do provide information to the other committees as well. So we also provide technical assistance to our member municipalities, either through, you know, with work that we do in-house or the work that we do through managing our consultants. We basically develop all the MPO-required plans and documents, the ones that they're going to go through the TAC and then come to you for approval and adoption that Peter talked about. Again, we manage all the transportation projects and initiatives that are on the UPWP, and Charlie said it's upwards of 190 tasks. So we do that. And the foster interagency coordination is very important. Christine talked about it. It's just, you know, we need to, and we do work collaboratively with VTRENs and other state agencies.
Jeff, you're right.
As well as, as well as our partners, our regional partners. It seems that this happens all the time. We have a board meeting and there is somebody cleaning upstairs. So, and, you know, Peter talked about facilitation. You know, we do try to just engage the public in all the work that we do, whether it's plans, projects, everything, and we do take those comments and input and feedback very seriously, and it informs our plans and our projects and our recommendations. And finally, this is some of the challenges, but also the opportunities that I see, we see facing the MPOs in general and us in particular. There's also potential changes that happens in the federal transportation bill. There are some funding implications and changes sometimes. There are some unfunded mandates, some funded mandates, but we need to respond and incorporate those changes into our work program. Accountability and performance-based planning and programming, it's something that we do more and more, and the federal government is requiring us to do now more performance-based planning, and we're going to talk about that. We have a presentation at the very end of the meeting tonight that we're going to talk a little bit more about that. One of the challenges is that the performance-based planning from the federal government puts a lot more emphasis on the NHS, the National Highway System. We're going to talk about the National Highway System, too, later during this meeting. So we have these, you know, the NHS versus some of the local transportation systems and issues. So our challenge and our opportunity here is to balance all of those needs, all of those modes, with limited transportation funds. So we need to address safety issues, roadway operations, vehicles, trucks, also transit, bicycle, pedestrian, all the modes, as well as address environmental, air quality, economy, resiliency, energy, health, and I can go on and on, on all these needs that we have out there. So our job here and your job is to actually balance all of those needs to have, to achieve our vision here that is articulated in the NTP. So that's kind of the end, I think, of the first session, and do you have any other questions, any suggestions for further, you know, discussions? And we are starting to put together session number two already, but we are open to suggestions.
What would you like to hear more detail about?
What do you like?
Well, I think the important thing is for, particularly for new members, to understand the difference between RPC business and MPO business.
Yep.
And a lot of members will see on the thing, there'll be an item on our agenda, and it'll have in parentheses, "MPO business."
Or should, I notice, and it doesn't tonight.
I wasn't going to bring that up, but.
It's a really good idea.
It is a pet peeve of mine, because what it does is it makes sure everybody understands what's being discussed. And our non-municipal members, you know, we have a state and a federal representative that participate in MPO business, but they maybe not, don't participate in an RPC business that's related to, you know, what it is. And then our non-municipal member commissioners or directors, whatever they are, they need to understand, it's nice for them to understand what's going on, but they need to understand that when the voting happens, it's just the municipal members. So there's no disagreement. They don't waste their time looking at something they don't need to look at, and those kinds of things. So if we get into the mechanics of delineating the responsibilities of an MPO board member and a commissioner, because all of us who represent municipalities, local municipalities, are both.
We also need to discuss the weight.
Right, and how we vote. I mean, in RPC business, we're all equals, and MPO, we're weighted by the population counts in our communities. So Burlington gets four votes, and Essex only gets two, split between the village and the town outside of it. And Colchester gets two, right?
In South Burlington.
And South Burlington did get two.
That's right.
Yeah.
We're talking about further things that we might want. I have questions. I'd be interested to hear, we went over the history of the MPO and the Regional Planning Commission here from 1966 on what, oh, have you? I'd be interested to hear, you know, we do our planning for the future on projects and such, looking 25 years out. Obviously, back, not to bring up a sore subject here, but going back to the Sirek Highway, the circumstantial highway was something that was proposed, as my understanding is, before 1966. So I'd like to know who had the forethought to see the need for that. Obviously, there was a need, they saw, and then, you know, how it came through, you know, its demise, or, well, at least, I wouldn't call it its demise. I think it's something that eventually, as much as maybe people wouldn't have given this, it's going to happen no matter what. The need is going to be there. As I came in from Essex today with the traffic, it's never going to go away, and so it's, you know, maybe not in all likelihood, but it will happen, mark my words. This video will be history.
You're recorded now.
On record, Dan.
On record.
It will happen today.
Dan Karen, Essex Junction. How is that Crescent Connector coming?
Yeah, that's coming real well.
Any other suggestions for deeper dives next month?
Well, my take on the inclusion of the word resilience had to do with some grant that this organization had to sponsor, become a sponsor for, for a year ago or something, or.
Hazard mitigation plan.
Something like that. And was that related to, it was a bit of an outlier, might have been opioids, I don't know what it was. What was that resilience word on there? The others I could read and kind of imagine what the metrics might be for those, but that word resilience, I'm just wondering, what did that refer to?
Yeah, I think you're probably referring to the hazard mitigation plan that we worked with Old Towns with, going, two years ago now, I think, probably, and we were probably working on it three years ago. You know, where we kind of look at the impacts that weather events have. So a lot of resilience is kind of like that. What do we do, you know, when the river comes up?
And then a lot of this work has happened after Irene, right, when we had, you know, a lot of damage in our transportation system. So VTREN started looking at more of a resiliency and evaluating resiliency of specific roadways.
Sure.
What also might be helpful is suggestions for best practices and communication between us as commissioners and representatives for our communities and our legislative bodies or local planning commissions. For example, I always like to know when the executive director is going to go to my select board, so I have the opportunity to go support the executive director when he's before my select board.
He does.
But at the same time, one of the things that I haven't done well, that I'd like to do a better job on, is when there is a result from a scoping study or something like that, that I'm also there to help support the RPC staff when they're involved in that, if for no other reason that sometimes the, you know, beyond the technical staff, if you're appointed by your legislative body, sometimes you can be helpful in communicating things that otherwise might not be received well by an RPC or MPO staff member. But I haven't done a good job of tracking that. The last time you walked in, I saw that our sidewalk, one of our sidewalk studies got done, and there was a controversial end result to it that I could have possibly have been helpful with in terms of communicating and getting the understanding, because, you know, as a former select board member, I kind of plugged into the way select people think.
Any other suggestions before we close this down? Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Start?
Yes, yes. We're going to have another one next month. Stay tuned.
I do.
We'll have pizza next time, right?
Okay. Let's suggest that.
We need to try to get something to get everybody interested to come.
Pizza will do anything.
Pizza and beer, how's that? No? Okay. I just.
Beer, I don't know.
Sure. Thank you.
Oh, why don't we do that? I missed that detail.
It might take, like, give people, like, a little bit of a way.
According to the clock on the wall, it's 6:15. So we'll start our September meeting of the Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. This is an opportunity for any member of the public who may be here to comment on items that do not otherwise appear on the agenda. Is there anybody here who would like to make such a comment? Hearing none. There are no consent agenda items, so we'll move on to approval of the July 18 RPC minutes. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Any comments, questions, edits? Yes, Catherine?
On page two, line eight, relatively little thing, but the word VE is there. The tip funding V category, it doesn't make sense.
Any other comments? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The next item is the appointment of an agriculture sector representative to the board, namely Tom Eaton. Turn it over to Charlie for that.
So there is a memo in your packet about this. We haven't done this in a while, so it'd be good to remind us about how we do, how we appoint what our bylaws refer to as regional board members. So these are organizational members as opposed to municipal members. And we haven't had an ag sector representative since maybe 2011 or '12, at which time we had one for maybe 18 months. So I want to, first of all, thank Tom for, I'm not sure if you volunteered or got volunteered, Tom.
A little bit of both.
Excellent. Thank you for your interest. And Tom and I had a chance to sit down and kind of review what the RPC is about and some of the roles. And his resume is attached on the back of that memo. And so some of the staff and executive committee are recommending that the board appoint Tom Eaton as representative of the ag sector.
Move we approve Tom Eaton as the ag representative for the CCRPC? One second. Any further discussion? Yes.
Thank you, Tom, for volunteering. It seems like most of your focus on your work is with dairy farmers.
Right.
Yeah. So I just wondered whether there are opportunities for you to engage with some of the other diversified farms in Chittenden County?
Oh, for sure. Yeah, no, it's, the structure of our business is structured towards larger dairy farms. I don't personally work with a lot of vegetable growers, but I, you know, around the town of Richmond, I interact with a lot of veggie growers and a lot of farmers and share a lot of trade stuff. So it's, but that's definitely.
Yeah, how many dairy farms do we have in Chittenden County?
Chittenden County? I don't know how many dairy. I would say probably 15.
It's a test.
Yeah.
I mean, they have a Heinsberg.
My point is, is I think it's important for anybody in agriculture to be here.
Yeah.
But we should recognize that we probably have more diversified vegetable and.
In this county more than any other county in the state.
So, you know, as long as you can also bring forward those issues and whatever. Glad to have you.
Yep.
Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations, Tom. You can flip your little. And having, you know, my maternal grandparents having operated a dairy farm up in Derby, and my mom grew up on the farm. It's been a long time, and I'm glad to see that we all have an agricultural sector person on the RPC. Welcome. Next item, I guess Emily is going to be handling the St. George Town Plan Public Hearing and Approval.
So it is a public hearing?
Oh, well then, if it's a public hearing, we should have a motion to open the public hearing on the St. Georgetown Plan.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? There, now we have a public hearing. Thank you.
And I guess we don't have any public comments on it. We do have the St. Georgetown Plan in your packet. The review is in your packet. And this is something that the PAC reviewed in November 2017. And they recommended that the plan and the planning process be forwarded to the board for approval. The town adopted the plan in February of this year. And our full review and review process with the PAC is detailed in the memo that's in your packet. As staff, we're recommending that the board approve the plan and approve and confirm the planning process is detailed in the resolution that you have. And, and that's all.
Are there any questions or comments about the St. Georgetown Plan and the process that went into it? Are there any members of the public who would like to make a?
Just a quick one. I noticed in the staff comments that there was a lot of data updates that we wish they could have gotten to but may not have. And we are hoping they'd include at least some references to other sources. Did that get incorporated?
So we made those comments in November, as you said, about the plan that we reviewed at that time. And they updated about half of what we referenced. So.
Not nothing.
And St. George is not one of the more highly-staffed planning commissions in the county?
They have no planning staff. And yeah, they've worked really hard on this plan.
Yes.
I would move that we approve the St. George Municipal Plan based on the PAC and the staff recommendations and that we confirm their planning process.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Do we have to move to close the public hearing before we?
Oh, sure. Otherwise it'd be open and get all messy and stuff. So.
Actually, can we go back?
Oh, we closed afterwards. We're ratifying the implicit closing of the public hearing. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. The hearing is now closed. Retroactive to that point in time before the vote was taken.
For Bernie, so that was Dan and Tony. And did you catch who the second was on the?
Yes.
The approval? Okay.
Can we let the minutes reflect the fact that we closed the public hearing before we approved the plan? So we did it right?
Sure.
You don't have to make the motion again.
Yes. Well, we could do that, but I don't think we need to. Thank you.
Next item is the Wunuski Tactical Basin Plan Overview. Oh, I'm just skipping right over things. I checked it because I was going to go on to it, and then I went back. I'm lost in time and space.
Jeff, you screwed everything. He doesn't know which end is up.
I was on a roll there. Guidelines and standards for confirmation of municipal planning processes and approval of municipal plans review. We have to come up with a catchy acronym for that.
I would leave approval according to the staff recommendation.
Seconded.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Why don't you, just quickly for.
I don't want to mess it up.
No, it's okay. In case there's any.
It went through this the whole damn meeting, for crying out loud.
For our audience at home.
Chris, can you start telling me whether the motion or a second in there? Because I'm reading the motion. I can't, I was still.
People are being very, very efficient.
They're going very rapidly today.
She blots out everything I say.
Jeff, you move, correct? And a second? And a second. All right, quickly.
Very briefly, as you know, we have our regional energy plan. We got our determination of energy compliance August 9th. Now we can give it to other people. So we put that process in our guidelines. And also, we made some other housekeeping edits that you can see in the memo.
Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Now, we move on to item eight, the Wunuski Tactical Basin Plan Overview. Dan?
All right, I ask your patience with this. This will go a little slower than the other items.
And also, just to, just to, we have a few presentations tonight. I think it'll be more efficient to let the presentation take place, and then we'll do questions and discussions after. None of them are so long that we're going to forget what we had questions about. But I think it'll just be more smooth if we can just let them do their presentations. So I thank you for that.
Chairman, again, for the record, Dan Albrecht, senior planner here at the RPC. So I'm going to give an overview of the plan. And one thing to note, I'm not a, well, I'm familiar with this plan and have read it through and been watching its draft development. It's not a plan that we wrote, so it's a DEC plan. So if I don't know exact some of the details, I'll try to answer the questions at the end or upon further review. So I'm going to walk through, first sort of at the high level, what are tactical basin plans? What's our role? And then, and once that introduction's over, I'll get a little bit more into, okay, well, what is contained in the plan? And what are its essential elements? Especially as regards to municipal responsibilities and obligations. And then I'll conclude with a little bit of discussion of the next steps in our process, which I'll see you here again at our next meeting when we do our formal comment and conformance letter. comment and conformance letter. So the DEC has been writing tactical basin plans for many years, they're done every five years, around the 14 basins, I think, 13 or 14 basins around the state, it's a planning framework around watersheds, and these are updated every five years. And I put these three bullet points there because it's really about, you know, like many plans, assessing the condition of the resource, and in the case of a natural resource, trying to protect what you have, the high-quality waters, maintaining them, and then restoring any degraded streams. And the rationale for why you do these, in addition to their intrinsic ecological value, is that because they provide a public benefit, both in terms of health and safety and enjoyment and uses of, of the waterways. So all tactical basin plans in the state share this, this common framework. So, again, and you'll see this reflected as I go through the plan in more detail, but again, like many plans, assessing, assessing the conditions, what's the baseline understanding? And the way the state does that is it goes through, you know, collects, any data they can, can find, their own data, data collected by others, monitoring stations, public input, et cetera. Once you assess the streams and the sub-basins within, within the watershed, within the larger basin, looking at different stressors, and then based on what those stressors are, understanding what those pollutants might be, and then, and then going from there, you begin to implement either total maximum daily load, formal plans such as phosphorus plans or regulatory programs to address these areas of concern. I won't really touch too much on this, but there are different goals for, for certain types of streams, so there, you know, A1 is a classification referring, and Don can probably knows the details, but, you know, your very high-quality pristine wilderness waters, down to lower designations, you know, depending on what other uses go on in that system. And then finally, the, the plan concludes with implementation in terms of broad strategies, and what is different about the plans more recently is that rather than sort of a spreadsheet of projects ranging from physical on-the-ground projects to education and outreach, this is more in terms of categories of projects, and you'll see that as we walk through there. What's also makes the Winuski Plan a little more of a more robust exercise is that this plan, as well as we addressed the Lemoyle Plan most recently, is also incorporating elements of the state's efforts to implement the Lake Champlain Total Maximum Daily Load, the TMDL. So this is a demonstration to EPA of the state saying, you know, in addition to our regulatory programs, here's this planning document that outlines how we're going to meet the targets we said we would meet when the state filed the TMDL. So our role in tactical basin plan development has really strengthened over the last few years as a result of the Vermont Clean Water Act in the spring of 2015. Starting in the summer of 2016, began to have annual contracts with DEC to, a contract that DEC provided funding to us, as well as the other regional planning commissions, to improve outreach and education efforts to municipalities on water quality generally, and also more specifically promote involvement in tactical basin plan development. So you remember, late 2016, we had a, or sort of a temporary clean water advisory committee, and then we ran it for a few months and it became formal, and we've used the Clean Water Committee, Advisory Committee, which meets every Tuesday after the TAC meeting, the Transportation Advisory Committee meeting, to work on different issues, and lately it's been a lot about the basin plans, as well as keeping municipalities abreast of other key issues. So through the Clean Water Advisory Committee, plus multiple emails from me to the Quack members, keeping them abreast of different issues, permit issues, webinars, grant opportunities, new regulations, et cetera, this is the way the input is gathered. So in terms of the tactical basin plan development, we're charged with working with the basin planners to organize sub-regional meetings, we've had some in Huntington and Richmond, we have our Quack meetings, we have our very active MS4 communities, municipal separate storm sewer system communities that are very active, both in terms of participation as well as their own staffing. So we gather that input, we update the information on municipal zoning bylaws and provide that to the DEC to show what our municipalities are already doing with setbacks and buffers, et cetera. Right now, the last few months, we've been sort of in the working draft stage, where the nice is that the DEC is giving us the rough document, we don't have to wait for the formal, formal, and just get a 60-day window and that's it. We've been seeing rough drafts of the plan for several months now by Karen Bates from DEC, and so we're now here actually in these middle bullets here where we're having our first meeting on this, we'll have a formal, public meeting in October, and then we'll have an early October public forum, more casual meeting, and then at the end, we bundle this up into an RPC recommendation on how the plan conforms, how the tactical basin plan conforms with our regional plan, the Ecos Plan. And we're also charged with helping the Secretary of A and R to prioritize water quality projects. So, just to put our area of the Winuski in context, it's a very big basin, goes way up, I guess even into part, into part of the Northeast Kingdom almost, I think, and it's big. So, our context, however, is very different from the rest of the basins, as you can see, because we have quite a bit of cultivated land and developed land as well. More locally here, it's several of our urban communities, and then our, our upland communities in the more mountainous terrain, and then some major tributaries such as Muddy Brook or Allen Brook, which gets a slice of Essex and a little bit of Westford, and so on. It includes several of the impaired streams, so that's a consideration, those streams you see in red are the MS4 stormwater impaired streams. So as I mentioned, the state looks at different stressors, you can see them there, I won't read them all out, but the key ones we have, of course, are nutrient loading, phosphorus, some toxins, and we do have some flow alteration in the main stem of the Winuski, obviously because of the dams, but those have been around since the 30s, so the dams are there, they're not changing too much, and then channel erosion, and then encroachment, or historical encroachment, I should say, within the landscape before, before our stricter zoning. So again, in the document, you assess these different stressors, and then, as we'll see here in the next few slides, the state makes a determination on what is the condition of some of these tributaries or segments of a river, depending on whether they meet water quality standards and whether they provide for the uses which are designated, swimming, fishing, drinking water, et cetera, habitat. So depending on those levels of whether it meets the standards or does not, it gets one of these designations of fully supports the uses stressed, altered, and impaired. In our particular case, a lot of these are stressed or impaired, impaired being the most common for phosphorus and stormwater as a pollutant, and in some cases, altered for invasive species. So the distinction here is really about whether, if you look at altered, whether it's a non-pollutant such as invasive species flow, or there's an actual pollutant, as we'll see, we'll talk about some of those. So in terms of our area, we have 14 streams or certain segments that are considered either stressed or impaired, the problem areas, so to speak, and you can see several of our stormwaters impaired streams, which we've talked about for some of our municipalities for, for quite a while, Morehouse Brook, for example, Centennial, Allen Brook, Sunderland Brook, there are several others, for example, in Monroe Brook and Shelburne, or Potash and Englesby and South Burlington, but those are to the west of the Winuski Basin proper, those are what are called direct-to-lake streams, that's a different basin plan, but, but they're there. So again, phosphorus is the one we hear about quite a bit, but there are others, from a planning standpoint and making everybody aware, like, we got to start thinking about these things, we've got some other issues going on as well, too, that we have to keep on top of, of the collective we of the state, the municipalities, and the public. So for example, we have Sunnyside Brook, which is impaired because of chlorides, and that, that's a plan, a TMDL, that is coming down the track, and there are other streams as well in the state that are affected by, by chlorides primarily from road salt. We've got the long-term issue of Shelburne Pond, which is altered because of the presence of aquatic new species, and I, there's, I think there's about four of them. There isn't really a TMDL formally identified or anything like that, but there's a recognition that, you know, there's assistance needed, whether it's to community groups, the towns that abut the pond, it's quite a large ecological system there, but if we don't pay attention to it, you know, we don't want to come back 20 or 30 years later and go, oops, it's completely overrun, and you can't really fish there anymore, never mind the snakes. And then, an issue of flow and land use, the plan identifies Joyner Brook and Bolton that is altered because of some portions of it that receive insufficient flow, and that's a matter of working with Bolton Valley on the issue of water withdrawals for snow making as well as general land use, et cetera. So again, it's an issue of, the way it's talked about in the plan is that review of the data and some sort of protection is needed, because you get too low a flow, on altered flow, it's hard for the bugs and fishes to make their home there and stuff, so, and then it could get further degraded. So those are, again, several issues to think about, you know, whether it's, you know, mercury, stormwater chloride, E. coli, for example, in Allen Brook, some of these have multiple problems, not just, you can have phosphorus plus another issue as well, too. So, back to phosphorus, because that's the 800-pound gorilla here, some of you may have seen this chart before because it's from our 2015 Ecos Report, so the, the TMDL document estimates that there's a current estimate of 631 metric tons of phosphorus going into Lake Champlain on an annual basis, and the relative contributions by, by different sectors. The plan, over the next 20-some years, and maybe we only have 18 years left, I think, is to bring that down by 34 percent. So the plan lays out an overall goal of 34 percent, but then allocates those targets reductions depending on the different sectors. So you can see ag is a pretty heavy lift at 30 percent, forestry, so on and so forth. The ones I bring your most attention to, and I'll follow up here with another slide, is wastewater treatment, because that's a municipal responsibility, and the developed lands framework.
Get on that, Tom.
So, so breaking it down now into, okay, so we've got to make these reductions over the next several years, within the municipal framework, the total, it's currently about 28 percent of the load, the base allocation, comes from broadly speaking, the developed landscape, and then another 9.85 percent from wastewater. So in order to meet the targets over the next 20-some years, the developed lands have got to reduce their overall load by about 20 percent. Those things you see there, the roads, MRGP, that's the Municipal Roads General Permit, which is applicable to, to all municipalities in the, in the county with the exception of the Gore. And then VTранs obviously own some roads and some parcels, the MS4 responsibility, and so on, so that lift is about, about 20 percent. So then, the plan then goes into, okay, well, where are you going to get this phosphorus from? It's in different areas, and these are, the plan recognizes that these geographic, and they have several maps like these, the plan identifies where some phosphorus can come from, where are the heavy loading areas, depending on the types of use, and so, not surprisingly, you see within the developed landscape, these, these areas where there's presumed heavy phosphorus loading, so those are the quote-unquote hotspots you'd, you'd want to hit in terms of projects to reduce phosphorus within the developed lands. In terms of roads, again, this is partially a function of, of the, the network of roads, but it's also a function of how many road segments are hydrologically connected, and you've heard from, from Chris Dubin, our staff person, about the road erosion inventories and Municipal Roads General Permit, so you see sometimes some fairly high loading in areas that may not be that populated, but it's steep, steep roads that are connect, very close to streams, et cetera, et cetera. That's where the presumed, you know, high-loading areas are. So, the next thing, so that's sort of, that, that outlines where the phosphorus is, where the potential areas are. There's also, of course, this plan, in addition to identifying projects, there's also an identification of unknowns or data gaps in a way, and areas of concern, so we have several streams, and I would urge, you know, the members from these towns to keep an eye on these and work with me and the other staff here to keep, advocate for keeping an eye on these streams, because if you don't keep an eye on them, A, you'll have no data to really assess the baseline, but you may end up with a problem, and it'll show up because you weren't keeping an eye on it, watching it get to be a problem. So there are several small streams which are, which are of concern here, as, as well as, you know, some, some ones that are more obvious because of the development impacts that are, that are nearby. So see, there's just some of the goals, and they're, and they're very basic, collecting the macro invertebrate and fish data is, is a key baseline data to collect to understand the health of a stream. So the, as I, as I referenced, rather than a list of, of a spreadsheet of projects, what this plan does, and I'll touch on it in more detail, is it, is it links back to what's called the Watershed Projects Database, but it sets forth categories of projects, which I think personally is a useful rubric, because there's so many projects being identified over the past few years, and more to come, with more ecosystem restoration project grants, the own, or UPWP-type projects that we've helped scope to assist with the MRGP, as well as literally, I think, 400-plus projects in the MS4 communities alone that are identified because of flow restoration plans, and then there'll be another batch once the phosphorus control plans get done by those MS4 communities. So you go nuts trying to keep updating a spreadsheet in the back of a document, so the state refers to the Watershed Projects Database, but within the plan itself, it outlines these categories of projects. And this list is comprehensive, it captures a lot of the key concerns in our areas, which for our urban communities, it's primarily about implementation of the MS4 permit, which includes a flow restoration plan for those impaired streams, phosphorus control plans for all those towns, and then stormwater master plans, which, which we've helped out with a few, most recently Jericho, Richmond, and Underhill, we've completed, or should I say, our consultants have, and we're about to do one for Milton as well, too, so there's lots of projects being identified out there. River corridors, of course, have always, have always been an issue with all the fluvial erosion hazard research, what's called the river corridors now. And then, the second bullet here is a very key one for all our municipalities, but especially our rural ones, municipal road erosion. And the good thing is, we're ahead of the curve on that, we've done the inventories for all the communities, we've identified top problem areas, roads that need to be fixed, and we're working with the towns to help get in the grants and getting our consultants to help scope the design, so it's just a feedback loop. Wastewater, of course, is another key consideration, and all, and then there are some other key objectives which are a little more related to the rural landscape of logging and elsewhere. So to sort of recap, within our area of Chittenden County, within the basin, the lower Winuski, we have these sub-basins, so we have the overall main stem, which again is, is going to be assisted through strategies that help the MS4s, as well as general landowner education, within the impaired streams, those tributaries I talked about, it's again, MS4 work with permit implementation, as well as other stormwater management and river corridor protection, et cetera. The Midland, or the lower mid-Winuski, again, some concerns that have been identified with, with higher. um, with, uh, with higher, with higher stream temperatures as well as stormwater runoff from roads, uh, and so on. And then the smaller tributaries, as you move on up, with, again, concerns about road runoff, um, other, other activities that, that impact some of these streams. And then, in some cases, like Huntington, more specific issue, which has been under monitoring for quite a while, of septic, um, seepage, uh, in the village area that affects things. Um, and then you see this thing about driveway education and outreach, the issue of driveways and private roads and their discharge. We had two meetings at Huntington and Richmond, and that came up at both meetings. It's a real recognition of something, something, assistance needs to be done, and it's a sticky wicket because it's private, um, lands, um, discharging into the municipal right-of-way. So, again, as I referenced, um, so, again, this, there's, there is no giant spreadsheet of projects within the plan. It refers to the Watershed Projects Database, which is the state, or initially started cataloging some of the grants they had already supported, but over the last year, through reaching out to the municipalities and others, more projects that have been identified purely a dot on a map to scoped with a design cost estimate are in there. Um, and like I say, some of them are conceptual and some of them are truly shovel-ready. Um, the last bullet there is essentially the way the state says, how do we meet the goals in this plan? Um, is that the DEC is going to prioritize their staff time, and they're going to direct internal and external grant funding towards recommended actions. So, when you see in the ERP grants, which come out about every three months now, it was a strong directive to, does it implement the plan? What is the pollutant load reduction? It can't just be, oh, this is a good idea and we should clean it up. We want, we really want to see proposals that are directly linked to the problems identified in the plan. Uh, so, where we are now, uh, so the plan, uh, we're in the process of preparing our comment and conformance letter. Regina did an initial analysis, and this is, uh, the statute quote here is directly from, uh, part of the text of the, of the, of the Clean Water Section where it outlines the duties of the Secretary in consultation with the RPCs. So, Regina identified, uh, three of our Ecos Plan strategies which, which really support, uh, and is consistent with the Tactical Basin Plan and vice versa, uh, developing areas planned for growth, et cetera. Number three, water quality protection and restoration is, is the primary one, and there are several sections that are water in sec, in Ecos Three that really mimic the goals of a tactical basin plan, river corridor plans, et cetera, uh, as well as water quality projects. Um, so, our next step here is that, uh, I've been working with the Quack, has seen some of our preliminary staff analysis already, uh, previous meetings. I'll draft up a conformance and comment letter, um, give that to the Quack, and the Quack will then finalize that letter, pass it on to you guys for your next meeting. In the interim, we will have a public meeting here on October second, and on October seventeenth, uh, again, as part of a public meeting here, we'll, we'll obtain any other input that people want to give to the plan, uh, which we can then forward to DEC, and then we'll finalize our conformance letter and submit that to the DEC. We anticipate that the public draft will come out around September twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, uh, but it's a two-hundred-page document, so, if, if DEC pushes it to October one, then I wouldn't be surprised. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Are there any questions or comments about this document and where it stands and where it's going?
Yeah, sir, the, the big question I had was about the, the project prioritization, the Watershed Projects Database. A lot of the language in here makes it sound like the authors of this report slash the state, you know, the sort of research side of things, are coming up with priority projects and adding them to the database. And there are just literally one-line item descriptors in the database that say whether they're funded, whether they've been graded, presumably to receive funding. Um, and I'm just wondering, is this sort of setting up a framework where the, the regulatory side is going to identify the projects and then pull in the town, or are these sort of organically bubbling up from the towns or some combination? I couldn't really, I, I scanned a lot of this, but it wasn't clear to me where this was headed in terms of, uh, you know, a project mandate framework versus just a nice compendium of good work that everyone's doing of their own accord.
Right. Um, it's a little bit about, the state obviously has, uh, projects that they've identified over the years, more on the, from the assessment and research angle. Uh, the projects are all mostly, you know, real in the sense they came from a plan or a research project, such as a river corridor plan, all those fluvial erosion hazard studies, stormwater master plans, et cetera. Um, what is a challenge, and I'll let Charlie elaborate, is that, um, the state sets these broad frameworks, but when it does an ERP, it's sort of serendipitous who happens to apply for one and submit a grant for it, rather than the state saying, there's eight-hundred projects identified, we'd really like to see a proposal for projects one through fifty, and then, so that's a little bit of a challenge there. So, in part because the state runs it by grant, it's not like they have a fifty biologists and engineers ready to go and do projects.
And I guess it's, it's, it's pretty vague right now in terms of how it'll roll out when we get to an assessment stage, right? We're anticipating this is going to be reviewed on a five-year cycle, there's all the happy talk about, we just do the BMPs, we'll meet the targets. The next cycle, there'll be more of a reckoning, I'm sure, when we re, we make that evaluation of, okay, what have, what have we had funding for? What have we had municipal partners for? What have we accomplished? And oops, we didn't meet the target. So, I, I was expecting this to at least anticipate, and maybe it's just the state, you know, the, the policy side needs to give the, the, the writers of these plans more, you know, of a clear framework for how it'll get to project identification and implementation in the absence of grant funding or municipal or MS4 projects that are going to happen anyway. I mean, right now, it seems like it's just a happy list where you apply for funding, but looking over the horizon, this is a regulatory plan to achieve an outcome, and I'm just curious if anyone who's been more involved in the discussions has seen over that horizon to how this plan will require implementation of priority projects, funding or not, because that's what we all think we're headed towards. And this is just sort of vague and happy talk about it.
Um, it's, uh, yeah, it's, it's kind of thirty-thousand-foot level, because it's not getting down to the project level. Um, and I think frankly, you know, I think in the La Moya Basin Plan, that basin planner started to try to get down there and ended up with a thousand projects on the list, um, and it started to overwhelm the system, if you will, for the plan.
Right.
Um, so, but to get more concrete, I think what's, a lot of this is getting pushed out through regulation. Yeah, I've heard, uh, Secretary Moore talked a couple times to the legislature that, you know, ninety percent of achieving our clean water objectives are going to be done through people complying with their permits. So, those are the ag BMPs, the, the wastewater, the stormwater MS4 permits, and the MRGP, the Municipal Roads General Permit. I don't know if that number-
So, that's the framework.
I don't know if that number is exactly accurate, but at least that's, that's the sense that is coming from the agency right now. And so, just to take that one more step, in that regulatory permit framework, they are, um, basically putting the obligation or prioritization onto the municipalities. Dan referenced a couple times, the MS4s doing the flow restoration plans and the phosphorus control plans. Those municipalities have to figure out, how do we get to the target and what projects do they want to prioritize to get there? So, then, those, those things, I think we have a pretty high level of confidence are being prioritized municipally, and so it's more of a bottoms-up, here's what needs to be done that makes the most sense, biggest bang for the buck type things municipally. And then, um, and we've been working with towns on the Municipal Roads General Permit to do the same kind of thing, you know, for all the rural towns. Um, that permit, looking at where the erosion's happening and trying to prioritize which project should happen first. Um, and the state's been putting some money behind that with grants and aid, uh, other VTранs funds, better roads grants. Um, so, I feel pretty good about that piece.
So, to sort of translate that into, you know, how do you get from being identified in a priority area broadly to a specific project being required and it being a partnership effort to come up with the funding? Where the state's at the table to help, but at some point, you know, not, if there's a thousand projects to hit the target, and we're just sort of narrowly looking at the low-hanging fruit, eventually we run out of those and we get to unfunded, large, required projects. And I'm just kind of curi-, so, what I, what I'm taking from it is, if you're broadly identified as in a priority area or having a priority impact to be addressed, expect any associated water, associated permits to be looked at through this context. This is providing the lens for a permit renewal, which is a separate process, but if it's a priority, expect that a project might be required of renewal. I guess that's what I'm trying to get to.
I have not heard them talk about using this in a, that kind of permit context that you're referring to it. I've only heard them talk about using this as, um, as long as your project that you came up with locally as a priority is consistent with this, then it would be appropriate for funding. Uh, and this is honestly, uh, a little frustrating conversation that I've been having for a couple of years now with, with the agency, that, um, there is a lack of analysis investment between the plan and these projects, um, unless the municipality's taking it on, you know, locally. And we've been fortunate to be able to do some of that, and that's also what we're doing with the stormwater master plans, is trying to look at that townwide, what are the priorities, what makes the most sense to do, um, and locally generate it. But statewide, that is not necessarily-
To sort of pick a concrete example, if the authors of a report based on modeling identify a priority project and place that on the list, if you're the town where that piece of land exists, expect that to be a conversation about implementing it.
I do not think that they have really gone down to that level.
Okay.
That, you know, they're not using-
So, it's an aspirational project list?
And you'll see even it's more objectives, you know?
Yep.
Categorical, if you will, strategy level than individual projects. The, the projects that are on there, uh, just really, I think, mostly came from local efforts, whether it was a watershed group or the municipality. Um, I haven't, I have not, at least I'm not aware where DEC has tried to dictate projects.
I, I was just focusing on one statement in particular on page seventy-two, uh, where it talks about identifying the highest priority stream segments. So, the highest priority stream segments in the basin have been assessed, will be revisited as needed, and have been added to the, the table and listed online in the Watershed Projects Database. So, it's sort of the nature of the Watershed Projects Database. That's where rubber meets the road with specific projects, and I just couldn't divine from this whether that was bubbling up from towns and MS4s doing it anyway, or if this is the planning process listing the projects and designating them themselves. So, it just seems like a distinction the towns would want to be aware of, that, I mean, once this is adopted and we all say it conforms with our understanding, we sort of lose the opportunity to have that discussion.
Any further comments, questions?
Just a technical thing, um, the Winuski Basin doesn't include Charlotte at all, but, um, it'd be good to at least include Shar-, the name Charlotte, like the, on that map, on any of the maps. I mean, that's a little bit of Heinsberg, but Charlotte doesn't show up at all, even though it's not in the watershed, but, but you ought to put the name of the town there. Go back to that other, uh, no, the, you, you had it, the first, all those other maps that show the basin.
Oh, this one?
Yeah. Uh, and the next one where it actually shows, uh, it has names of all the towns.
Yeah. This one?
No.
Other direction, Dan.
Back.
Or, or, or the end.
Yeah.
These are all, these are all DEC maps, aren't they?
These are all DEC maps, yeah.
Okay. All right, well, then-
You should make that comment.
Oh, you should make the comment to DEC.
Sure. I mean, if that's what we're supposed to be doing, is making comments, then the other thing is, is that the, um, estimated percent hydrological road connectivity by town, I believe that that is for the entire town, that, this, this chart?
Oh, yeah.
Right? But some of the charts say that it's within the basin, and some of them are just for the whole town, so it should be labeled that way.
Okay. What table is that?
Estimated percent.
No, the number of the table. Table.
Uh, figure, uh, twenty-three.
Thanks.
And, you know, so, it, just, all those tables need to be saying whether they're talking about the basin or town itself.
And the mysterious town with Charlotte is very-
Thank you, Anuger.
Invisible.
You don't have any water. That's tactical.
Uh, I did not get a chance to look really closely at the whole report, so I'm basing a lot of the, what I'm seeing here and in the comments. And the, the, one of the tables we had up there showed that agriculture was a really significant reduction.
Yep.
Um, eighty percent right there, which is like the largest category. But throughout your comments and discussions and everything you saw here, the only thing I saw in terms of a mention of agriculture was just in that last page of the best management practices, implementation. Does this whole thing just, is that all they talk about it, or is there a larger portion in here that they do talk about that, that we just haven't commented on?
Right, no, no, there's an extensive discussion of agricultural loading. Uh, there's several maps like this with, with, related to ag and, and more detail in it.
Uh, because even though we're not necessarily a, primarily an agricultural area, it is still a good part of our economy, and as we talked about earlier, there still is a lot of agriculture there, and we just have someone on our, um, commission now. So, I think we might want to at least try to look at that and provide some comments, because it, we sort of seem to just ignore it altogether.
And we're going to have another crack at this next month, so this is sort of a preview of coming attractions. Anything further? Seeing none, thank you very much, Dan.
You too.
Forward to October's discussion. Next item on the agenda is Clean Water Advisory Committee membership. So, I am going to ask out two handouts. Um, sorry to get to the memo. So, and this got mentioned in the last conversation, but we formed a Clean Water Advisory Committee, uh, two or three years ago now, um, and added them to our bylaws formally. Uh, the language up at the top of the memo here, uh, tells you what, what was decided at that time as the membership of the Quack, uh, which is really, uh, the nineteen municipalities, a board member. Uh, Don is a representative of the board on the, the Quack. Those organizations, the university, um, A&R, VTранs, and, and the airport, aside from A&R, which is obviously the regulatory, uh, agency here, uh, the other three are MS4 permities as, in addition to the, um, urban suburban towns. Uh, so, that's why they're members, uh, of the committee. And then, uh, the last bullet is other voting or non-voting members as deemed appropriate by the RPC. So, at the end of August, uh, when I got the, we have a, we have a, Dan mentioned this, we have a, uh, an agreement contract with DEC to facilitate participation in water quality work, but it's particularly the basin plans. Um, and so, uh, we got a, uh, a sentence was added in there, and I should give some context to that. That contract is not unique to Chittman County RPC. That is a statewide scope of work, um, and they are, I think, trying to get some consistent process and representation going on around the state in these conversations. Um, and I think I get into this further, this is commentary from me, but, um, we are unusual in our Quack compared to the other RPCs in not having the Conservation District or Watershed Associations as member of, members of their Quack. They may call it something different than the Quack, might be their Natural Resources Committee or something, but, um, and so, this language, uh, was added to this, uh, agreement this year, trying to get us all consistent statewide doing this. I think there's another dynamic in background for this, I think, is building credibility in the legislature, that the decisions that are coming out of RPCs are well-balanced and reflect, and are inclusive and reflect all the voices around water quality in the region. Um, you know, we were pretty unique when we started up our Quack. Um, I think we were the first ones to have one in the state, but, uh, it's also, we're very unique in the MS4 situation, because we have so many of our towns with MS4 permits. Um, and so, there was kind of a sense when we set the Quack up, and those of you with better recollections than me, please pipe in, but I think to keep it as very municipally- But I think to keep it as very municipally focused because of all the permit requirements on our municipalities. So I'm trying to say this with no, no emotion and no blame or anything, just what happened. So, you know, that's, so that's kind of some of the background. In the, the two-page thing, the comment, the thing that starts, comments regarding QuAC membership received sense of work packet was mailed. So the first number, and there's nine, nine communications here. And the first one is from me to my QuAC friends, noting just that I found myself in an awkward position because at the end of the QuAC meeting, as you saw, and there really wasn't a lot of time for this discussion. The QuAC really wasn't prepared to make a decision and said, you know, they wanted to keep the membership as is until we have and can establish some guidelines for membership. And I found myself in a difficult situation because this contract language kind of says, we're going to have these other parties participate in our basin planning vote. And as you just saw, our basin planning vote is coming up in a few weeks. And this is, you know, not the way anybody likes to do business. It's not, you know, it wasn't, we don't have a lot of time to make a change if we want. We, you know, either need to do it tonight or not do it, or push it off, you know, for another time. I don't know, I got to ask the question of the QuAC, you know, what's, what's DEC going to do to us if we don't? I don't think there's a gun or a fine associated with this. But I don't think it's, in the big picture, the situation we want to be in in terms of the inclusive conversations at our advisory committees and positioning ourselves with regard to water quality going forward. So I'm not going to review all these comments, but just to let you know that I did get the comments. Based on the comments I got back, I'm proposing a revised staff recommendation. So that's the bottom of that. You can see highlighted in yellow are some of the things I picked up from my QuAC friends that would either clarify or maybe try to provide some guidelines. So the first was, wasn't very clear about whether these are voting members or non-voting members. My recommendation is that they do be, that they be voting members. We're talking here about the Friends of the Winuski, the Lewis Creek Association, and the Winuski Natural Resource Conservation District being added as members, as voting members. The previous, the recommendation that got sent to you wasn't, was suggesting that the QuAC maybe develop guidelines. Here I'm suggesting that maybe the board actually set interim guidelines just to like have a backstop in place right away. Because there was some fear expressed about, you know, when we get a lot of other nonprofits or other organizations that maybe are not real partners with our municipalities, but have other interests. So I'm suggesting that we propose interim guidelines or institute interim guidelines for future QuAC membership. The first two were in the original recommendation, the primary focus is on watersheds that are within Chittah County. Number two, there are established nonprofit organizations with a track record of participating as partners with our municipalities on water quality. And this is between Marty Illick and James Sharard, some, some more detail about water quality project education, monitoring, and/or implementation. The third one came from James Sharard, who's the stormwater person in Williston, that they are not political or legal advocacy groups. And then the fourth one kind of came out of some more conversation, actually with Dennis Lutz this morning, which is not reflecting these comments, that it would help if the municipalities could actually nominate organizations that they are partnering with. And so suggesting that there'd be at least two municipalities nominating an organization based upon their partnerships with the organization. And then finally, that these guidelines can be updated by the QuAC as they determine in the future. So I'm trying to thread a strange needle that I hadn't had to confront too many times in my ten years here of, you know, not having an advisory committee fully on board, but trying to put the RPC and the board in a decent position with regards to making particularly a recommendation on the, the basin plan for the Winuski next month. And I guess the last thing I'll note is, you know, we're talking about inviting these organizations to the QuAC table. You know, they may or may not participate, and I'm going to feel like, geez, we're having a lot of anxiety here and they didn't even show up. That may very well happen, and I'll, and people will make fun of me then, and I will deserve it, but that may happen. So anyway, I just, this is the, I'm trying to finesse a solution here with this recommendation. I'm happy to take questions or comments. Don?
I think Jeff had his hand up first, if you want.
Well, I'll start with you, Dan.
I just want to reiterate a couple of my comments. First of all, the QuAC had all of five minutes perhaps to consider this. So it's, it's no surprise that there wasn't a vote by acclamation. Personally, I, I think that, that the, we're taking too narrow a view of who deserves a seat at the table. I, I think it should be broader, as broad as possible. That said, there are plenty of other avenues for organizations or individuals to comment on, on something like the tactical basin plan other than sitting around at the QuAC. So we're not really depriving anybody of a voice, I don't think, by, by keeping a narrow focus. Finally, I, this is the first I've, I've seen it or thought about it. I really do have to object to number four here on the criteria. And that, that, that kind of smacks to me of a secret society kind of thing, where you have to be nominated by, you know, by your buddies to get in, and if you don't, you can't. I, I think that's a little bit too exclusive to serve as a, as a real rational criterion for, for asking somebody to come and sit at the table.
I mean, as I understand it, that was intended to address the desire to make sure that these are organizations that have historically worked collaboratively with municipalities. That's already included in item two. So four seems to be a sort of a belt and suspenders. If, if the substance that is sought to be addressed by four is what is stated in two, how important is four to that?
Yeah. It was just, you know, a notion, I think, and, you know, that I think gave the municipal members of the QuAC a little more security. I think what really is frustrating or, and was frustrating to the QuAC, and if you read all those comments, you'll see some of that come out, is, is the external force to expand the membership, right? It wasn't, it wasn't something that either got talked about at this table or their table to say organically, boy, it would really be nice, you know, to have these members. It's, and I think this was a notion, Don, you're right on, was to make sure the additional members came up from internal conversation, not external.
Jeff?
Just a point of clarification on the voting versus the ex officio membership. I just don't know what the thinking was behind that. I mean, I think the thinking behind having people be ex officio versus voting was, the voting members had the responsibility for implementation and are the ones that could be expected to have to bear the fiscal consequences of doing things. It's very easy for someone who doesn't have fiscal consequences to making recommendations to say yes, without balancing whether or not it's affordable for the member community. So in, on one respect, you know, I'm, I'm troubled by people who vote, I want them to have skin in the game. I don't want them to be able to, just like we do school budgets. You know, everybody's contribution is capped by their income. So it's easier for them to say yes to increases because they bear no fiscal consequences to that. And so I was wondering why, like Jim Jutres, for example, his recommendation that they be ex officio didn't make it through the final cut, because that could affect whether or not I support this or not.
Yeah. So I think that you're getting to a good question about what does the QuAC vote on? And, and what is their, what's their authority?
Mr. Chair, I have a follow-up after that.
He already knows. And, you know, I think one of the primary roles of the QuAC is certainly the basin plan, you know, and it's hard for me to imagine, well. So, and also, let me put one, one piece out here, which is, the QuAC makes recommendations to this board. None of these organizations have membership on this board. And so, you know, the, the municipal concern of municipal control, I think, is still here at this table, even if the QuAC membership expands. So I'll, I'll put that out there first. Secondly, and I think the focus in this recommendation about these guidelines focusing on the partnership was really so that they are organizations that, they may not be financing, you know, as in how the municipality pay, you know, uses their taxpayer funds to finance a project. But they, these three organizations are organizations that do apply for grants and acquire funds to do projects. You know, sometimes they're with a rain garden at a school or things like that. So they, to that extent, the reason that I was proposing them as voting members is because they are actively bringing money into the region to put into water quality projects and then, and therefore have, you know, and are talking with people about which project should happen. They've been active partners in our stormwater master planning, you know, trying to help the community decide on priorities. Very much more in a partnership.
And so I, I guess. Stop that if they don't have a voting membership?
So my sensibility was to go a little further, extend that hand and say, sure, have a vote here. You're three out of nineteen, or three out of twenty-two, with nineteen towns. And so.
And I.
Now, like the airport, are they ex officio or do they vote?
They have a vote there.
Okay. Are there any currently non-voting members, or is everyone a voting member?
Yeah, and everyone is a voting member right now. And again, I kind of got back to, you know, they're not, this committee doesn't spend money, they don't. I don't know, I'm looking at Don to see if he can remember of any situation.
I honestly can't think of a lot of things that we have actually voted on. And of those few that we have voted on, I can't recall any close or even non-unanimous votes. So I, I think the voting is really a, almost a phony issue.
You still have your follow-up?
Yeah, and I've been on this, I've been on the MPO since like 2001. This is the absolute worst acronym I've ever seen come up with. Call it CWAC or something like that, but QuAC? This is the absolute worst acronym I have ever heard associated with this organization.
Duly noted. Minutes shall reflect. All right. John?
I got a worse one, I'll tell you after.
All right.
First, I would, if, if adding three was anywhere close to half, I'd share Jeff's opinion. But given the number, how it works out, having some more advocacy people at the table with a bunch of bureaucrats and municipal officials isn't necessarily a bad thing. My, my real question here is, is there a definition of political and legal advocacy groups? Simply because most groups that are involved in some sort of environmental charge, you know, they're there as an education group, and that education is technically lobbying. And that's, they come to people with ideas and they try to influence public policy through the work that they do. That's kind of their charge and why they exist. So I, I think I understand what three is trying to get at. I read the comments and I'm aware of, of what's in there. But I, I'm just wondering if we're trying to solve what I would consider to be a, a real issue with wording that's going to potentially backfire on us. Because I don't know what that, what does that really mean?
Part of my thinking is, this is, this is something to put in place on an interim basis, and then I would anticipate that the QuAC would take the time to actually think through some of those and come up with a set of more permanent guidelines that are a little bit more rigorous in that regard. Dan?
Just to follow up on this, you know, hearing what John said about it's only three organizations or groups. But that's to say that we're capping the QuAC or the committee at this number of, of board members. What happens down the road, some entity, some group comes on, as Jim Jutres states in his, his comments to Charlie, I suggest this in the event you are challenged by another group that may meet their criteria and establish. It's, it's just a, it's a slippery slope, is what I'm saying. Jeff, I agree with Jeff, that, you know, it's, you're setting a precedent and it gives, it opens the door for, for more. And I, I just see it as a potential problem.
And I think out of that conversation kind of grew the, the, more of the club rule of two municipal members having to nominate you because you are a good partner. And that was kind of the backstop on that.
Now, ultimately, any other members would have to be determined by this commission based upon a recommendation of the QuAC. And it's a, there's no entitlement, not every organization that conforms with these criteria will get on there. It just says that anybody who's, who's going to be recommended for inclusion has to meet that. So ultimately, it comes down to this commission having the ability and right to determine who is or is not. And I take that to mean that if one of these member organizations either does not work productively or falls out of compliance with our criteria, whatever they may be, that they can be removed from the committee as well. So ultimately, we have that control, and I think we need to have that. Mark?
Yeah, thank you. So, you know, when I saw the comments, and to be clear, I don't sit on the QuAC or swim in the QuAC, I thought the final bullet here actually comes close to capturing it. The other voting amount, voting members, as may be determined appropriate by the commission after a recommendation from the QuAC. So it seemed like if we just followed that, I presumed that would mean that a majority of the QuAC members would vote people up or down, and then the recommendation would come here. And part of my, you know, I'm reluctant to get into the level of detail that's here and would trust the QuAC to make recommendations based on what makes sense, and then it comes to the commission.
What is the reason for having interim guidelines as opposed to just saying, these three are on for now, QuAC, work on some guidelines?
That, that definitely could be. I was, you know, really trying to just, I think, fast-forward the conversation at least one step to like throw something on the table for them to work with, just in case. And partly also addressing the fear of like, there was going to be another organization that heard about this and, and asked, you know, in two weeks, well, I want to be on the October agenda. So I guess I was trying to help the QuAC a little bit in having some, some interim backstop in case that fear came to life, which I can't imagine, but maybe it will. Jeff?
Let Rob go first, I mean, he hasn't spoken.
You got to jump in.
Well, I just want to say.
I have my hand up.
Absolutely, I'm saying he needs to get his hand up too.
I have my hand up. I'm ready, I'm just going to jump in. So I just want to say I support them being voting members. Like, these are the organizations that are out in the community. They are, the QuAC is simply making recommendations to the board here. They're more likely to participate if they feel like they have a seat at the table that has a little bit of, a little bit of power and that their input is going to be respected as opposed to being only a non-voting member. I'm not saying they're not going to be respected, but it just feels more of a part of the decision-making process.
Especially if there are no other non-voting members right now, so this is a new category we'd be creating here, basically.
I would, I would support them being voting members if we had guidelines. If it was fully vetted by the QuAC, okay? I don't believe it was, based on the comments that have come in. I will, I would support adding the organizations as non-voting members and ask the QuAC for recommendation on whether they should be voting members. And if the QuAC decides that they should be voting members, then I might change my mind. But I can't support the criteria as put forward, making them voting members, especially since we don't have guidelines, because essentially what we are doing is dealing with an optics problem. We don't have enough representation, or we feel we might get dinged for it. And I don't want to do something like this without having it thoroughly vetted and have the guidelines well-developed and supported by the C W A C. well-developed and supported by the CWAC, so, I can't bring myself to say it now. So, I just, I mean, I, I feel like we've run out of time. We need to do something. And we're doing this because we fearful that we have a problem with the state in terms of how it looks. And doing something like this without having something thoroughly vetted in a way in which we are giving a non-municipal entity a chance to vote on something, and I understand about inclusiveness, I understand that some may believe that the voting is a non-sequitur, but this hasn't gone through our usual process, and so therefore I can't support it at this time. I could support it next month if it goes through the process.
Just to note on that, like, the University of Vermont is on there, and that's not a municipal member. Like, it's where do we, where do we draw the line? Do we just say that only municipal members can have a vote?
We're a municipal service organization, and we can expand our environment when we do, when we do it correctly and thoughtfully, and not last minute based on putting our executive director on the spot for taking all the responsibility himself.
I do think this is more than optics. This is actually a term of our grant agreement, which we committed to and indicated we're going to comply with. And one of those requirements is that these groups participate, and we are the only RPC that doesn't currently have participation, because we are a unique circumstance. Our, our collection of municipalities is in a very different position than is the case with the other RPCs. But, so, there are, it, it's more than just an optics issue, but I absolutely hear what you're saying, Jeff. Mike, you had your-
Yeah, the only question is, I'm looking at this in the excerpt from the bylaws on the Quack membership. The last one, I'm wondering if we're moving too fast. I think, I think that, I think what was going to happen was the Quack, CWAC, whatever you want to call it, was going to look at this and make a recommendation, but they didn't get a chance to, if I understand correctly. So, do we really, should we be stepping back and letting them, this last bullet says, "Determined by the board after recommendations from the Quack," and we haven't gotten a recommendation from the Quack on this. So, should we back up a minute?
Well, we got a recommendation, but it's just, it's just different.
It was a leave it as it is.
We are reversing-
A recommendation from the Quack is what I'm saying.
So, according to bylaws, should we?
Well, their recommendation was to keep it as is, right, to be clear. I mean, I'm, I am saying something 180 degrees different than the Quack.
But, but I thought that they, I thought they didn't have-
There wasn't enough time. There wasn't enough time. We got the grant agreement, you know, a month ago or four weeks ago, and, and we have to vote on the basin plan next month. So, that, absolutely, I'm pushing the situation in a very uncomfortable way, me a culpa. And, and that would be best, but for the fact that we're voting on the basin plan next month. And, and this grant agreement for this fiscal year says that our, our recommendation on the basin plan will include these other organizations.
Okay.
That, that's what really hung me up was, yeah, how, how are we executing on that? And will, will there be a penalty? We'll survive, I'm sure. But if we can, I'd like to.
Well, let's see if we can move this discussion from the abstract to the concrete. Is there a motion with respect to this particular matter? Don?
I would move that we suggest to the Quack that Friends of Wenuski, Lewis Creek Association, and Wenuski NRCD be invited to participate or be, be advanced to the board for approval to participate. And secondly, the second part of that, direct the Quack to come up with a set of criteria for future recommendations for, for added members.
I understood the first part of that.
Well, basically invite, I-
Not knocking you down.
No, 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 but I'm, I would, originally thinking, I would just say, "Let's invite those three organizations to be members." But seeing this in the bylaw, that we seem to be in agreement, that the mechanism is that the Quack brings the nominees to the board to then be invited to serve on the Quack.
Well, we were, we were highest on the food chain, though. So-
We, we could disagree with the recommendation.
We can, we can make a recommendation to the board, the Quack, that they come back to the board with something with our-
Okay, well, then I'll, then I'll rephrase.
Yeah.
Two parts. First part, that, that those three organizations, Friends of Wenuski, Lewis Creek Association, and the Wenuski NRCD be invited to participate as full members of the Quack. And number two, that the Quack be, be directed to come up with a reasonable policy to guide future nominees for additions.
I'll second.
Let's go, hey, I heard John first. John, John's the second, and Don's the first.
And the Quack come up with reasonable policies?
And criteria to propose future additions.
I just want to say I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote no, only because I don't believe they should be voting members until it's fully vetted.
Any further discussion on the motion? No.
Chris Wong.
That's the three organizations, but I will in the motion. So, Don made a motion
that those three organizations be invited to participate as full members of the Quack, and that the Quack come up with reasonable policies and criteria to, I think it'd be instructed to. It was a directive rather than a-
Mm-hmm.
Be instructed to come up with reasonable policies and criteria to-
The question will come to me anyway, so.
And future additions.
Nominations.
Okay.
Can I use that for clarification? Is that to come up with criteria to present to the board, or they come up with criteria and that's that? I just didn't understand that part.
No, I think it's ultimately, it's, it's going to have, it would be something that we would come back to the commission, wouldn't it?
That's not what the motion sort of said.
Well, the board, the board, I think, by, the board needs, the full board needs to approve additions.
Right. I mean, it says, other, other members may be deter, as determined appropriate by the RPC. If there's a policy that's developed that's going to guide the Quack going forward with respect to these advocacy group members, I think we need to take a look at that policy here, because ultimately that's going to be guiding whatever recommendation we're-
Right. That's not what the motion actually said.
So, review before we move on to the-
So, I would propose an amendment to the motion that it amended as described by the chair.
Or is that a friendly amendment?
Repeat that amendment. There are two people talking.
Yeah.
I think the, the amendment would be, or the friendly amendment would be that they would not be instructed just to come up with the criteria, but that they would propose the criteria to the board.
To the full board.
To the full board.
I'll, I'll accept that as a friendly.
You okay with that, John, as the second?
Yeah, I thought that's what the motion, what Don-
It's just making it, it's making it clear, so that we don't get any mis-
And before we vote, if I can make one, one comment, and Dan and Charlie, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm not, notwithstanding this last bullet, I'm not entirely certain that in the bylaws or whatever administrative words that describe the Quack and its operation, I'm not even sure that, that voting versus non-voting is distinguished in those bylaws. Because we don't, there are no non-voting members now. I'm not sure there is such a type of membership.
Well, there, if you look at the top, though, in the bylaws, it talks about other voting or non-voting members.
Yes, but I'm not-
But what it doesn't say is, are the ones above that voting or non-voting? So, it doesn't really, it's a, it's referenced in passing once, but it's not really-
Maybe there, I, I excerpted the bare minimum. So, there is more language in the bylaws around this, but I can't recall what it says.
It honestly has never come up to my knowledge.
Right. I, I did, now, there are no non-voting members right now. Yeah.
How many, how many non-municipal members are there?
Three.
Three?
Four.
Okay. Let me-
Typically, the DEC doesn't-
Let me try to-
Five.
Let me try to make it so it's something I could vote for. Would you accept a friendly amendment that says that the number of non-municipal members will not exceed six?
No.
Okay.
That's not, that, that, that might be for the Quack to talk about and for the group to vote, but I'm not going to make that as an arbitrary. I wouldn't accept it as a-
Oh, just ask. I'm trying to get the yes. I'm trying to get to yes.
Any further questions, comments? Yes, Andrea?
Yeah, well, first, I'd like to disclose that I am a member of, a board member of the Lewis Creek Association. And some of this has come about, about voting on Wenuski Tactical Basin Plan. And Lewis Creek Association works in the watershed towns of Charlotte, Shelburne, and Heinsburg in Chittenden County, and then also towns in, in Addison County. And none of, of the, I mean, there's very small portions in both Shelburne and Heinsburg that are part of the Tactical Basin Plan. I would say that, that Clean Water Committee would, my sense is that there, there has been a longstanding Clean Water Committee that has been really the MS4 towns, and that it is very important for the rural towns to be able to participate in that, and that the municipal staff for our rural communities really is not able to participate, and that an awful lot of projects that have happened in Charlotte, Shelburne, and Heinsburg have been because of nonprofits, working with the town, but basically being the staff support to write the grants, not only for education projects, but for implementation projects, you know, ranging from, you know, $70,000 projects to, you know, $2,000 projects, or $400,000 projects. So, I think it, it is valuable to have Friends of the Wenuski, the Conservation District at the table, because it will bring a more robust conversation for the issues that are affecting the rural communities. Because I think our representatives from those rural communities are, are in a different league than the MS4 towns.
And, and a point of clarification on that, the meetings of the, of the Clean Water Advisor Committee are always-
Yeah.
-separate from, at least on paper, from the meetings of the MS4 community. So, there are other people at the, the Quack meetings that are not MS4 already. But I take your point very well.
I just want to be clear. I mean, I'm resonating with the bending of the bylaw. Bylaws is the reason not to vote for it, but at the same time, I'm hearing that there isn't time to take it back to the Quack, because the grant says, "Do such and such, have people on such and such for when we approve this thing next month." Because if, if it all comes back to the meeting next month, where we both approve three new members to it, but at the same time, we're voting on the plan, is there really that emergency and time pressure that is there, or is the plan really not going to be voted on after public forum? Is it the public forum? I forgot the-
October 2nd, that's just an informal meeting.
Right.
So, it's our next monthly meeting is going to be our final vote on the tactical plan.
So, so that this really is an administrative fix?
There is a Quack meeting before the next commission meeting.
Right, right.
But the commission would have to then approve the recommendation of Quack, which is what I'm looking for, to follow bylaws.
Right. Now, given, given the timeline here, we don't have the ability to send this back to the Quack, get them to come back to us, let us just decide how we're going forward, and then have the Quack review the tactical plan. We, we're missing one.
No way, no, out of nowhere.
Yeah, I just wanted to zoom back and say that just from my perspective, it comes down to what this board, you know, this board is the authority for all these questions ultimately, from constituting the committees to approving the membership. We want to encourage broader participation in those discussions to inform our discussions. We have a limited time to do that. This is three out of nineteen on the table today, and we're going to undertake a more deliberate, thoughtful process to come up with guidelines with the full input, input of the current membership of the Quack for us to consider and then direct them in their future nominations. So, I'm 100% comfortable with a motion on the table as amended. I think it represents, you know, the broad inclusive conversation, the convening role this board has. And I don't see any of the, while, while important considerations for the future, I don't see them really, you know, having any, you know, substantive impact on the, the outcome of the Quack deliberation. So, I'm, I'm fully supportive of this.
If there are no further comments, we'll take a motion, vote on the motion. All those in favor of the motion?
No, no.
No, okay.
It'd be helpful at this point to reread the motions.
No more cookies for you after this.
Don made a motion that those three organizations be invited to, to stay as full members of the Quack, and the Quack being instructed to come up with reasonable policies and guidelines for future nominations. However, there was a friendly amendment that the Quack would propose criteria to the board for future nominations.
Thank you.
Okay. Call a question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right. The ayes appear to have it.
Dan, Jim, who else is now?
Sir? Left-handed members of the, all right. Thank you very much, folks. That was a good discussion to have. Move on to item number 10, comment letter on, there was no irony in that, I meant that. Comment letter on DEC draft stormwater permitting rule. Take it away, Dan.
So, a bit quick on this. This is, as the memo reflects, the comment letter came from our MS4 Subcommittee, developed a comment letter of, again, all permities, nine municipalities, and the three, what are called, non-traditional MS4s. The comment letter is highly detailed. I won't pretend to know all the, the aspects of it. But, keeping with the policy, whether it's the Quack or the MS4, the idea is to develop a letter, and ideally, there's enough time, and in this case, there was, 60-day notice or even more, for it to be able to work through our committee process up to you guys. So, the committee developed this letter. A lot of it is inside-baseball-type comments about stormwater, but there it is. And so, if you adopted this letter, it, it says basically, "Thanks for allowing us to comment. Please consider these comments developed by our committee and fully adopted tonight, should you guys so choose."
Anybody have questions or comments about the comment letter regarding the new stormwater rule? Jeff?
I just have a question, a clarification. Number 22, section 22, which is comment number- 22, under section 22, page 3.
Yes.
Are we really suggesting that we, we have them double the amount of fee, impact fee that we're, that they're suggesting by that comment? It says, it says, "Please provide a detailed analysis on how the agency determined the $10,000 per acre pervious service was accurate amount to charge as an impact fee." And then we put in the town of Williston, things where the average retrofit comes out to 19.1. And it came across to me that we were saying, "You're not charging enough." And we're, we're talking about, "You should double the per acre fee." And I just was wondering how that was responsive to our member communities.
Yeah, my interpretation, I don't know if somebody knows better than I do, but is that this is an impact fee on private developers, not a, not a fee on municipalities. And so, I think municipalities were concerned if the private developer wasn't paying an appropriate fee, that either this, you know, was going to be underfunded, something that needed to get done. Because I think those fees may roll back either into DEC or maybe into municipalities.
Two meetings from now, we'll talk about how expensive housing is.
I'm getting one perspective here.
Yeah. I understand. I just wanted to make sure that we were proposing to double the fee essentially with our comment. Okay?
Further questions or comments?
Just to note, there's one type on my part of the footer, should say, "Comment letter on draft stormwater permitting rule." So, I'll fix that before the letter goes out. Lots of boilerplate.
Anything else? Is there a motion then to approve the letter per the staff recommendation? So moved. Thank you, Mike. Is there a second?
Second.
Don seconds it. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
The ayes have it. Next up, the National Highway System and Changes There Too. Jason, you're handling this?
Marshall and I will be handling this.
For the mayor.
Like that spirit. Good evening, everyone. I'm Marshall Distel, I'm a transportation planner here with the CCRPC, and I will be presenting with Jason Teres on our Chittenden County National Highway System Updates. We have a very short presentation, so if you could keep comments or questions to the end, that would be greatly appreciated. So the overview, so Congress approved the establishment of the NHS to focus federal resources on roadways that support the nation's economy, defense, and mobility. To, to give you a little idea of the scope of the NHS, roughly 90% of Americans live within five miles of one of these routes. So there are three components of the NHS in Chittenden County. We have interstates, other NHS routes, and intermodal connectors. So I-89 and 1-89 would make up the interstate NHS in Chittenden County, while other NHS routes would be, we call regionally significant principal arterials, so like US Route 2, or roadways that are also classified as freeways, like 289. And then lastly, we have intermodal connectors, and so those are NHS routes that connect to intermodal transportation facilities, so rail stations, airports, and bus terminals. So why does the NHS matter? So the NHS is really intended to be this, this unified system of roadways that, you know, sort of connect population centers with intermodal facilities and major travel destinations to support intermodal transportation and, you know, enhance economic development. So essentially, you know, the NHS is highlighting the most important routes for efficiently moving people and goods throughout the nation. So it's a, it's a nationwide aspect. So in terms of funding, the bottom line is that we, you know, we don't really know if, if there will be funding implications related to performance measures, but we do know that, you know, there, there's likely to be a penalty if we do not meet our pavement and bridge condition targets on the NHS. And I'll shift off to Jason here.
Thanks, Marshall. So our previous transportation bill, federal transportation bill known as MAP 21, when it was signed into legislation, it wholly incorporated a whole classification of roadways known as principal arterials onto the national highway system. So with the stroke of a pen, if you will, about 44 miles of new NHS routes were added in Chittenden County when MAP 21 was signed into law. And since then, V-Trans has gone through the process of removing all of the, these designations outside of Chittenden County, and it's not just V-Trans, but many other DOTs across the country have undertaken this effort as well.
In consultation with the regional planning commissions in those regions.
Clarification noted, yes. In consultation with the regional planning commissions, I was getting there. So while they were undertaking this process with the regional planning commissions, we were in the process of updating our functional classification system, and you may recall, updates to that came before this board, I believe it was back in March of 2017. And the recommendations that we were looking at, or the changes that we were looking at to our functional classification system at the time, could have had implications to the national highway system. So we asked that we hold off on making any changes to the NHS at that time, so that we could finish our functional classification updates. So we had done that, and we have done that, and now we are here talking about the NHS. And lastly, on this slide, just to give you a sense of where we've been and where the CCRPC staff recommendation lands in terms of the total NHS mileage in Chittenden County, before MAP 21 was signed, we had about 121 miles. After MAP 21 was signed, it went up to 165, and tonight, our recommendation would come somewhere in the middle at about 137. And so before we get to the actual recommendation, just wanted to go through the process that we've, that we have laid out before us. So we went to the TAC back in June, and they made their recommendation, which should be noted, and it's really explicitly detailed in your packet, that tonight's staff recommendation, I'm just going to pause.
I feel safer.
You want to take a deep breath?
Of course, tonight, we had no vacuum cleaner upstairs. I think they're working...
You missed it. We had it earlier, during the NPO orientation. We're going to buy them an Oric.
Safe.
I'll just take this from the top. So we went before the TAC with a recommendation in June, and they made their recommendation, and it should be noted that their staff recommendation tonight differs slightly from what the TAC recommended, and that subtle change is detailed in the packet, and are happy to go into that after we finish up. Only have one more slide after this. And from there, we brought a recommendation to the executive committee in August, which is what is before you tonight for hopefully your approval. After tonight, assuming there is an approval of sorts, we would submit the official request to V-Trans. And should be also noted that we've been in consult with V-Trans throughout this process, so they're on board with the recommendation that we're proposing tonight. And they would then submit their official request to Federal Highway Headquarters in Washington DC for review and approval. So here's our recommendation, our recommended national highway system map on the right. And we have proposed what is a two-part motion, if you will, that is almost verbatim to what's in your packet tonight, with one subtle change that we had overlooked. So just kind of run through this, that the board accepts the final CCRPC staff recommendation as presented, and this is the subtle change here with the additional intermodal connection to the Burlington Downtown Transit Center. And that's something that we had discussed with the TAC, but we had just forgot to include as part of this presentation. And also with the understanding that this system can be reviewed and changes can be made at any time as circumstances change and population, the system evolves. And secondly, to request that V-Trans consider these changes as presented for submittal to FHWA. And with that, we can entertain questions? I do. It was kind of a reserved slide to show the changes. That was sort of a backpocket thing, but inside-baseball.
So, and, and I think that last point is important. This is not intended to be a planning document, this is a... They waited. This isn't intended to be a forward-looking planning document, this is intended to reflect the transportation infrastructure as it exists now. And so as circumstances warrant in the future, changes can and should be made. Are there any comments or questions? Andrea?
So many funding forces tied to the number of miles or anything that we have on this?
There is a national highway, you know, funding program, but it's not, you know, it's not restricted to it, or, you know, so this doesn't affect the funding.
Not a funding.
And really, you know...
Well, yes, yes and no. There's a little bit of a nuance to that, as if, if we're going to put in, if the feds are putting in performance standards, or we're putting in performance standards, that the feds will accept, or however the performance measures get done. The feds do tie their purse strings to meeting certain standards. So when the state gets around to putting a budget together on what roads and what bridges and what infrastructure is going to have money thrown at it, it's going to throw money at the ones it needs to to meet the performance standards. So there's no extra money coming in for anything, but what I think it does mean is that V-Trans and the legislature will pay particular attention to this network to make sure they meet those performance standards, which generally will mean they'll get priority for funding. So there's a little, that's a little bit different than the way you phrased it, but that's kind of what this does.
As we're, the next item that we're going to be looking at is some more of those transportation performance measures, and those are going to be tied directly to the NHS. And so to the extent how you grade on performance measures is tied in any way to funding availability and prioritization, it does have an indirect effect on it.
And I think we should have that presentation before this. Otherwise, we're paving Main Street with Winuski.
It's overdue.
It seems like what we heard earlier was that there was a preference in our training earlier, the preferences towards or leans towards things that are in the national highway system. And that's sort of reflected in what you were saying, that there's a slight priority to put money here.
You got to remember, the, the feds are interested in a subset of roads, particularly, not just all the entire road network, they have a particular interest in pieces of it. So they sort of look after that. So that's, this is, I don't want to call it backdoor, because I think it's much more upfront than that, but this is the way that they kind of wink at you on where you need to put a good chunk of your dollars.
Right. And that's what I'm thinking, and with that in mind, why would we want to reduce the size of our national highway system and cut out those areas from that one bit of priority for future funding?
I suspect Amy's going to have something.
So, I don't, I don't agree with, entirely with what John is saying, because it isn't about the priorities. The important thing is that we get the national highway system down to a sustainable network of roads that meet the federal criteria, and many of these roads don't meet the criteria. That's why your staff is making the recommendation that they're making. What, what took place in MAP 21 was adding on all these roads that quite frankly, it just makes no sense to have them on there. They stop at municipal boundaries, they connect to nothing, they don't even meet the criteria for NHS designation.
But it's all valid, I agree with you.
Right. The important activity that we're engaged here is creating a network that's sustainable. These are roadways that we're going to have to do additional data collection on, you're going to have to do additional data collection, we're going to have to develop performance measures for these. We hope we never get to a situation where we don't meet the performance measures, because we set them and you set them. So if we're doing our jobs and doing them correctly, the performance measure should be something that's reasonably achievable for us.
Yeah, and I agree with...
So we don't ever, we're avoiding, we're trying to avoid that. The problem is if you spread this network and make it this grand thing, it becomes absolutely unsustainable for us to do the necessary data collection analyses to support what the performance measure should be.
No, and I do agree with that. We should make sure that the, what we have on the books is the proper network.
That, that all makes sense. Could I ask you to clarify the comment earlier tonight that said it seems to tend towards national highway system?
Yeah, so, so we're going to be talking about performance measures in a second, but you know, I can just jump ahead and just basically, there are some specific measures that they have penalties if you don't meet the targets for those measures, and those measures are very specifically about pavement and bridges on the NHS. If you have, if you don't meet your target for poor pavements or poor bridges on the NHS, there is a penalty associated with that, right? So that penalty says that the state receives funding to address NHS issues. In the past, V-Trans and a lot of DOTs have the ability to flex that funding, right? To take funding from the NHS and put it in the Surface Transportation Program, which basically you can just give money to all federal aid roads. So that ability might be not eliminated, but minimized if you don't meet your targets, because you need to start achieving your targets. You have performance measure, you have targets on your NHS, and you need to do that. So that ability might be minimized, I don't think it's going to be terminated. The other thing that you need to think about is, so yeah, there are going to be some implications whether you meet the targets or not. The other thing you need to think about is that we're not getting more money into the system. I don't know, I believe that the, the money that we get for the NHS is around 120 millions, 220 million. We're not going to get more of that. So the more miles we have on the NHS, we're diluting that pool of money to actually fix the roads that we need to fix. So that's the way you can think about it, too. There are going to be some implications, but also we need to focus on the high priority roads in our region, because we don't have enough money to fix everything.
Okay. Jim? Another, there's two more. I'm assuming that outside of this map, we basically have the interstates and route seven.
That's right.
Okay, because I was like...
They do go to the county boundaries.
Okay. I just wanted to verify that.
Zoom in a little.
Once again, Charlotte's not there.
I wonder how those are going to get that either.
The second thing is just, just a question. Most of this proposed NHS is pretty much, what's the right word, has duplicity in it, where you've got a backup route going from one place to another, which makes sense. The only place I see that there might be something missing, and I'm wondering why it was cut out, is the connection from Winuski to Burlington, where now, west of the interstate, there's nothing at all there, where there was in existing. So that you have two potential routes to get through there. So I'm just wondering what the criteria was for taking that particular one out, if you know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about. I think it was just a, we saw it as redundant and just not necessary to, to keep in there.
Okay.
So I had a similar question, and it makes sense to me that, that, you know, there's not enough money to cover all the arterials that were in there before. It adds a burden in terms of additional analysis and red tape and record-keeping for something that's not going to be... I always ask, is it like the original SEDs, where you throw every potential project that could ever get funded onto a list in the hope that you've maximized your options for spreading the, the dollars around? In this case, there's a penalty for doing that in terms of the administrative overhead. So I get the idea of streamlining it, but I do wonder, is there an eligibility question where for some strategic roads, it may be worth keeping it in the system just to preserve eligibility that might not otherwise be there? So that's, that's one question. To Jim's last comment about the sort of redundancy of major north-south, east-west routes, you know, we did add Pine Street. The Boulevard segment was in both, but we've added the Pine Street north-south connection to the train station. And I'm just curious, if the goal was to streamline, why did that one segment get added? So just curiosity.
It got added, it just got modified based on the changes that the Champlain Parkway has taken shape over time.
Because I mean, if you get dinged for having lousy pavement quality, start your washing machine. It's a fresh pave now, but man, that's not going to last.
Something to think about, the remove, the routes that have been removed, like, take for instance, Route 15 in Essex. I mean, we, now that we, we have all of our roadways meeting our performance metrics, or at least as far as we know, Lenny will talk about it more, we have the ability to flex our NHS funds over these routes. So if there is a need, we, we can absolutely meet that need, but if we enter into the situation where we're including these routes and then, you know, degrading the overall performance, and then losing that ability to flex funds, that we may end up in a situation where there is a route that needs it and it can't get it.
Yeah, that all made perfect sense to me, except why include Pine Street, if that's the goal.
It's the Champlain Parkway.
It's future.
The alignment that got, or the piece that got added is the last chunk, where it's running on Pine Street.
That is the Champlain Parkway.
So, you added Pine Street. Just saying, if there's no benefit to having roads that aren't gonna really get federal highway dollars, why add one that will guaranteed have lousy pavement quality more often than not, after the current?
Well, it isn't on yet.
It's technically not on yet, it's unbuilt, but.
I think it also has to deal with the fact that the Amtrak train is gonna be where it's gonna be in Burlington, and that's a road that leads there if you're, if you're coming through, up to the city. So, it's sort of a way to identify the road that is, at least from a federal level, they predict you should use.
Once the Champlain Parkway is built, we could then actually consider removing the intermodal connector from Exit 14. So, that's something we could think about.
I'm gonna ask one of my typical Jeff questions. I never thought we'd add a trillion dollars to the national debt in the ninth year of an economic upturn like we did last December. Has anybody given any thought to, what if they decide they add another trillion dollars to the national debt in the next, well, maybe 2019, leading up to 2020 elections, and they decide that, well, we'll take the federal funds and we'll let your market to the national highway system for improvements? And are we doing something to reduce our national highway system network? And I understand all the reasons for it, and in a world that doesn't change, I completely understand why we're doing it. But are we potentially being short sighted if something like that happens? Or has anybody even, has anybody thought about that, and it's been dismissed? Or what? I asked the same question last year, but I feel like I need to ask it again. And I fully appreciate and understand the reasons for doing this and the good thoughtful staff input. But if anything, I've learned over the last three years, the world changes, and it changes pretty rapidly. And are we guilty of doing something, maybe by doing this, that we might, 18, 24 months from now, we feel bad about?
Well, the one comment I have, my understanding is that this has been an effort that's also been engaged in across the country to sort of readjust after MAP 21 and getting the NHS system back into like, the position it was.
My point is, is that under current, the way things are going, this doesn't affect the amount of money that we get, okay? As a matter of fact, it could be a penalty. But what happens if that circumstance changes? And maybe it's not a big chance, okay? Maybe it's not a big thing. But if they add another trillion dollars in national debt and put it into infrastructure projects, and they take a quarter of that, a third of it, half of it, and put it into roads, and they say, oh, we'll just put it in the national highway system, are we being short sighted? I'm just asking it rhetorically. I fully expect everybody to say, no, you know, it's foolish thought and everything, but, you know.
Say that, I would say, we hope not.
As, well, so, well.
I didn't know whether anybody looked at that, or had seen any.
I didn't, yeah. We could have some conversation, you know, about that. Or, I mean, there's even been conversations about.
And Amy's looking at me like I got three heads again.
Well, I mean, there's been all kinds of crazy conversations in DC, you know, like, oh, maybe the federal government should get out of this business of, you know, transferring money to the states.
Is that somebody here?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. You know, so, you know, I think we did have some conversation about, you know, trying to walk our way around that, but at the end, this still felt like a reasonable place to land, but, you know, no guarantees in life, for sure.
Especially now.
Yeah.
I would just say, I think it's a fair comment or fair thought, I just follow directions. And.
Federal.
I was.
No, no.
To establish a system that is present day.
Makes sense from a planning perspective.
Yeah.
Most of these do not, in the green. And we have, we retained a couple, which, you know, are the only ones in the state that have been retained.
Well.
I added some.
And added some.
As soon as you also wrote.
Right. I mean, for instance, the approach into Burlington from 189, there's some large infrastructure projects coming down, I mean, the circulator, I mean, there's large projects on a route that we just subtracted. So, to Jeff's question, I mean, to me, it comes down to a balancing of any administrative burden of leaving the list inflated, that you could relieve by winnowing it, and potential eligibility risk if there's a windfall and infrastructure week number 10, you know, leads to something. I mean, I hear Jeff's point, and that's the question, is there so much administrative overhead that we gotta winnow it now, because it's just burdensome, versus, what the hell, keep your options open, maybe there's some formula that's pegged to miles? I don't know.
Well, I think it's also, it's not, everyone takes out their crayons and comes up with whatever roads they want to have federal money for, but there are specific criteria regarding intermodal connections and primary routes to get from point A to point B across the country that have to be met. I mean, and it's just a matter of, do, which roads meet those criteria here? And this is an effort at complying with it. Again, how wise the criteria are, isn't within our bailiwick. But our job is to evaluate those criteria in our road network and come up with what we think is the fairest map, understanding that what the future holds is anybody's guess.
So, last two questions, and maybe you can take a stab at it. Is there an order of magnitude sense of the administrative relief, winnowing it this much? Is it $10,000? Is it $100,000? Just that sort of curiosity on my part that would inform a decision on this. The other, that basically is what it comes down to. And is there any sense of timing or relationship damage if we just sit on it?
Well, as far as winnowing goes, it's actually more than what it was before MAP 21.
Correct.
So, we've. That's irrelevant. We have a lit, we have an approved NHS now. Jeff's point is a very valid one. I mean, if there's a federal formula funding question, and it's tied to miles, why the heck would we shorten our miles?
There's absolutely, in answer to Jeff's question, there's absolutely no indication at this time that there's any planned changes in NHS funding.
And I think the other part.
That's why we've been so collaborative with federal highway on this. We've had lots of conversations back and forth, the staff in particular, who's really, really gone all the way to Washington DC to ask, to say, what does this mean for funding?
We have been asking a lot of those questions. Yeah, that was, that was the first question. Because, right, it's a nonstarter if this is going to take funding away from our region. You know, that was just at a staff level, like, I wasn't gonna bring something here that was gonna do that. And I think the other, the other dynamic, we're talking, we're focused here on the NHS, but really, the federal pot of money that comes to Vermont, I think, we know, has been flexed a lot to do a lot of different priorities in our region in particular, you know, with regards to transit, or like that, and other roadways, you know, town highway bridges, or other things in our region. So, I think it is, I think, a 20-year vote or something, of some display of confidence that we're gonna still, as a state, Burlington, not put Burlington in a uncomfortable situation where they may get some weird, you know, federal highway requirement to do some improvements that they weren't really planning on yet, also. So, we're trying not to have it be used as a punitive thing against municipality.
Justin, it's a double edged sword. It's local control verse sort of being dictated from Washington, short of some new pot of money that directs towards it. Because if you've got the ability to flex locally, locally, but I mean statewide, you get to make your own decisions to a late degree. If you don't, then you've gotta deal with what's coming down from the mothership in DC. Now, that said, you know, there, I agree with Jeff's point, if, you know, Trump and company were to come up with something that they're only gonna focus on a narrow piece, which all indications are, if they ever do come up with money, that is how they're gonna do it. Will it fall down on this? You don't know. So, you sort of, administrative burden is only one piece, the other is how much flexibility, and some of it is to flex money outside of Chittenden County, if they feel that's where the need is. Others, it would be to take and do other roads within Chittenden County, because we don't really feel we need it there, we want it there. So, there's a lot of soup going on there without one straight answer to get to it.
Any further questions or comments? If not.
Just a point of order.
Absolutely.
Is this something that non-municipal members can or cannot vote on?
Yeah, I'm sorry, this should have been noted on your agenda as MPO action or MPO business. And so, yeah, for Tom, you heard that, this earlier during the training, but, so, it's municipalities.
But our non-MPO members certainly have the ability to weigh in on the discussion than anything else. Just because they're non-voting, doesn't, we diminish their value there.
Jase, could you put up the language that the recommendation is, as it currently?
Is it different than what was in the packet?
Yeah, there's the reference to the downtown transit center, which is in there. So, this is the current staff recommendation, which is a little different than what was in our packet. Is there a motion to adopt the staff recommendation?
So, second.
Since 2000.
Get that, Bernie? All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much, folks. Now, Lenny, you're gonna be doing the transportation performance measures report.
Well, Peter and Amy will tuck in on this. They will start in our permission.
Well, you got a little taste of performance measures there, and the discussion on the national highway system. The good news is, you don't have to take action on this tonight. But you will next month. Pay attention. So, we talked about this back in February, came to the board to talk about performance measures and targets specifically related to safety.
Good reason.
And we took some action at that meeting. And I wanna give a little bit more background and primer on that, because it's kind of a complicated new thing related to transportation. So, it doesn't hurt to get another refresher on it. But there are some new deadlines coming up for some new performance targets, and that's where Alani's gonna take over and talk about those, because she's been working with VTrans on those. So, a little bit of background first, and again, this is a bit of a refresher from when I was here back in February. So, I'm gonna give you background on this. This is a national thing. It came down from the federal government and the federal law, and they established the national goal areas. But the MPO will have to take some action specific to some of the targets. So, we're gonna talk about those and Alani in more detail, and you've already taken some related to safety. And then, how the, the law that was passed back in, whenever it was, 2015 or 2012, that kind of laid out the groundwork for performance management. Subsequently, there was a lot of rulemaking. If you're familiar with the federal process, a law gets passed, and the bureaucracy kind of takes over and spends several years writing rules around that. So, the rulemaking related to the measures is some target setting and set the deadlines. And I'll talk a little bit about each of those. Transportation performance management goes back to 2012. It was reiterated in 2015, and those are the two federal transportation bills. Jason talked about MAP 21 that came out in 2012. The legislation itself established these goals in these, these various areas that are listed here in the last bullets on the page. Safety, infrastructure congestion, system reliability, et cetera. They don't all apply to us because of our population size and air quality, and Alani will get into the details in terms of which don't apply to us later on.
Can you point out which two apply to the NHS?
Yes, that'll come up. Infrastructure.
There's two, and system reliability.
System reliability.
Alani's gonna talk about that in more detail in a minute. So, the rulemaking that came in after the laws were passed, talked about the performance measures in more detail. And it went into a lot of detail on the rules and responsibilities of the parties that are involved in this, specifically, and this applies to pretty much any transportation-related planning activity. The agency of transportation at the state level, the MPO and the transit provider are always listed as a group of three to coordinate all their activities, as they do in planning activity, they do here in setting transportation performance measures and targets as well. So, the three of us have been talking about this for a little while. The general rule is, the regional planning commission, as an MPO, has six months after the state sets a performance target in one of those categories, for us to do one of two things. Agree with the target that the agency set, or come up with our own. And that applies throughout each of the targets we'll be talking about. We dealt with safety already, and I want to rehash that a little bit right now. The first performance targets that the federal regulations set were related to safety. VTrans set targets for those five, five-year average items that are up there. We had numbers for each of those, and we talked about this in February, and I think I've got a slide later on, if you wanna see what they are. But they established those last August. We had until February this past year to accept them, agree to them, or set our own. This board in February decided to agree to the VTrans targets. And we did that on February 18th. That's where we are. But we're about to move on now. We have these other areas where performance targets are being set at the state level, and I think this is probably where Alani wants to take over, because the other one's coming up.
So, I'm just gonna talk about the new measures and targets. Peter just talked about the safety, which this board accepted, the targets accepted back in February. In the, in this winter and spring of 2018, we collaborated with VTrans, and we met with them and FHWA to talk about targets for the other categories that apply to Vermont. And not all categories apply to Vermont, as Peter mentioned, and I'll go through this. The first category that we met about was about infrastructure condition measures, and this, and this talks about the percent of the interstate and non-interstate NHS, that they has good or poor condition for the pavement, and the percent of NHS bridges in good or poor condition. And there is, there was a target deadline for VTrans for these measures, and that deadline was back in May of, you know, May 20th. Well, VTrans actually submitted the targets a little early than the actual deadline. So, now, that started our clock, which basically is six months, 180 days after, after the submission. So, we need to either accept VTrans statewide targets for those measures, or just set up our own. And we have a draft staff recommendation at the very end about that. Of course, this board will decide that. So, real quickly, this is basically the VTrans target. So, the column to the left that talks about the interstate and non-interstate NHS to the right. So, as you can see, again, we talked about percent of pavements in good condition on the interstate and the non-interstate NHS, that's the first row. And then, underneath, in the green, and then underneath, you can see the percent of pavements in poor condition. So, see if I can use this one here. So, you can see the miles on the interstate, how many miles we have, and that includes, I believe, also ramps, not just the main lines. So, and the non-interstate NHS. So, the, this is the target that VTrans came up with in collaboration with the CCRPC for the good condition on the interstate. 35% of the interstate should be in good condition. Right now, we are down to 27.1. For the non-interstate, again, we are a little low. But the important thing here is that the penalties only apply to the poor condition measure, not the good condition measure. So, basically, here is, for the poor condition measure, they provided the federal maximum, which is 5%. The target was set slightly below that, and we are actually, you know, so, doing pretty good on that for, on the interstate. For this one, we're a little bit above the target on the non-interstate NHS. Again, FHWA provided a 10% maximum, the target is 9.9, and we are now up to 11.2. VTrans is hopeful that with changes in our NHS and other changes, and other paving that they're doing, that that number is gonna come down. Now, the penalty is this. If for three consecutive years, VTrans does not meet those specific targets, then we talked about the, you know, that VTrans has this ability to flex funding from one program to the other. So, the program that has the NH funding, NHS funding, it's the NHPP. It's the National Highway Performance Program, I believe, or something like that. So, VTrans has had the ability to flex, and it did flex over the years, up to 50% of that program into the surface transportation program, which actually, the money goes to all federal aid roads. So, what the federal government is saying, if you're not meeting those two targets, then. then more funding needs to go towards improving the condition of poor pavement on the NHS. So, more funding is going to go to, to projects that they're just going to go in that direction. So, that, that's a penalty. The other category that has a penalty also, I need to point out, is safety. So, we talked about that in February when I, we presented the, the presentation on safety. But this is the penalty here. And I also want to point out that in your packet, you received a draft report. Well, we started writing a draft report about all this because we want to have everything in one report. And so, in that report, we have descriptions about what is a good and what is a poor condition on the pavements. So, the next one is bridges. I think we are actually doing pretty good in our bridges. So, the targets, again, the bridges are for the whole NHS. They're not separating interstate versus non-interstate NHS. So, right now, the NHS bridges classified as in good condition is, you know, 47%. And the target is 35. And again, the, the, the poor condition, we are in good shape for those. The bridges also have the same, sorry?
What's the category between good and poor?
Fair. And there is, yeah. And there is, there is an explanation of what fair is in that, in that report too, yeah.
We want our roads to be fair.
So, so, so there is...
But we don't want to be inclusive.
So, moving on, so that's the NHS condition category. And those measures were under the NHS condition. This is the NHS system performance, which is the system reliability measures. And it is broken into two measures, well, two categories, subcategories, and total of three measures. System reliability, which basically breaks down to the percent of person miles, not VNT, person miles, on the interstate and on the non-interstate NHS that are reliable. And there is a very, very long explanation of how we get there. I'm very happy to talk to any of you individually about all the equations. I'm very happy to go through all the equations. I don't want to do it right now. But very happy to do it if you're, if you're interested afterwards offline. So, those are the two measures under the system reliability. Under the freight movement and economic vitality category, we have basically a similar measure for the truck travel time reliability, but that's a little bit simpler because it's an index. V-Trans again had a target deadline. We worked with them to come up with the statewide targets. Their deadline was May 20th. They again submitted it slightly earlier. So, then our deadline is now early November for those measures. Okay, so, to set up the travel time reliability targets, V-Trans and a lot of other DOTs used a research data set called NPMRDS. If I can, oh, there it is. It's right there. I don't even have to remember it. So, they use this data source. This is, I believe, a free data source of, you know, like travel data on the interstate and non-interstate NHS that we have access to. So, we were looking at it, and we just evaluated it for Chittenden County. So, what this chart is telling us, so V-Trans looked at the data, we looked at the data together, and basically, they looked at data for each month. So, this, this measure is basically the percent of, again, the percent of person miles travel on the interstate that are reliable. So, they looked at this data, and this is the data for 2017. And this is over a course of a year, by the way, that, that target. So, they look at that data, and they came up to 99.6% of the miles on the interstate were reliable.
Is there any seasonality to it?
Yep. You can see the seasonality. So, you can see that, so basically, V-Trans, this is the target. So, 90%, they set the target. This is the 90% line. So, everything below...
My point was, the 90% line isn't a 90% line adjusted for every month? Because if you look at February and December, those are snow months. So, if there's a time base for this, that's going to, they don't have the same craft in Florida that we do.
Absolutely. You're absolutely right. That's why I think that, you know, we set it up down to 90 and not to up here because we're going to have January and, you know, sometime November, that our months are going to just be below the, the target. But we felt, you know, and also...
Is this an annual target or a monthly target?
No, it is not. It's an, it's an annual target. You know, it's over a course of a year. But so, but V-Trans has the ability, and I need to check this, that they need, they can change this target. Because the problem with these data is that we don't have enough data, historic data, to go backwards, to see what was happening. So, we have 2017. Now, we're going to have 2018 and moving forward. So, we're going to have the ability to look a little bit more into the historic data. Right now, it's an annual target. So...
It would be safe to say on a national level, they're worried about congestion, which we just don't have here. This is really irrelevant to us.
We have rushed five minutes.
So, anyway, so this is, this is basically, yeah. So, this is the seasonality. You can see that in February and December in 2017, you know, our interstates were not that reliable, but it did not affect our, you know, total, you know, numbers here. So, we are still meeting the target.
We don't want people traveling faster on those snow days anyway.
Is there a minimum target set by the government, federal government, for that?
There is a minimum threshold level that was...
But we said 90. What, what is that?
Oh, no, they did, they do not have that.
Not in this particular category.
It is not, yeah. So, this is the NHS travel time reliability on the, you know, on the non-interstate NHS, right? So, that makes sense that our target is going to be less here, right? And our year-to-date data indicates the same. Because here we have principal arteries. We have like, you know, roads that they are not as reliable as our interstate. So...
Good thing we took that segment out between Manouski and Burlington.
Helps a lot, huh?
Bring compliance.
When V-Trans was tracking NHS, was it, did it include those MAP 21 green roads from the previous map?
Yeah, they did.
It did, right?
They, they did. But, you know, I'm just, and I have a kind of a slide afterwards. But when we actually looked at our Chittenden County numbers, we saw that the non-interstate NHS data is not really reliable for our county. We didn't, not make much sense to us. So, we need to kind of investigate a little bit more about that specifically in the county because we have a lot of non-interstate NHS here versus the rest of the state. So, that's something that we're talking to V-Trans and Zoe and, and other people there to figure out if we can purchase additional data.
What's the, I mean, how do they collect the data? Is it somebody on an iPhone or is it...
Cell phone data, you know.
With a location tracker on and that kind of stuff?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
In the terms and conditions.
So, all of you that turn off your location tracker, you're not in this, you're not in this sample.
Sorry. You're not reliable.
I'm not.
So, moving on, this is the V-Trans Interstate Truck Travel Time Reliability Index, which is slightly different. Now, it's not the percent. It's more like, it's the, again, you need to think of it as a, it's, how reliable is the interstate? And this is only for the interstate, by the way. How reliable is our interstate, you know, for trucks traveling, you know, throughout the year? And as you can see here very clearly, our interstate is not very reliable for the, you know, winter months. So, which is, you know, I mean, it is Vermont, and that's what we expect, right? Right. So, basically, this is, this is a target that I believe that V-Trans is going to keep looking as we're getting more data, as we're getting, you know, more years into this data, and we have more historical data, then we might just come and change these targets. So, moving on to a preliminary staff recommendation to you, and, you know, happy to discuss this next month too, is that we are recommending that the board adopts the V-Trans statewide targets for all the measures that we presented before that is relevant to Vermont. And the reason for that is that we don't see any practical policy or funding benefits or implications whether we set up our own targets or not at this point. There is a lot of extra work for the RPC and coordination that is required with no clear benefits at this point. And, and very importantly, for two measures, for the pavement conditions on the municipally-owned NHS, which are pretty much the Class 1 time highways, we don't have enough historic data for us to actually set up targets. Because V-Trans only started collecting non-municipal NHS data for pavements only in 2017. So, we have no historic data there for us to allow us to do that. And the, the bullet after that talks about the, you know, this, this data unreliability that I talked before is like, when we looked at that, that data set, the research data set, we felt that we need more work, and maybe we need to purchase more data to understand it because it was not really reliable for our non-interstate NHS in Chittenden County. And the other, the last bullet says that the board can actually, in the future, can decide to set up targets for this, for the MPO area. So, you're not being precluded in the future of doing that. Jim?
Could you clarify that a bit more?
Sure.
I mean, is there, the very last one you just talked about. If we set these standards, are they for a current time before we can change them? Or can we change them next year?
So, for some measures, we can change them next year. Safety is a yearly target. For all the other measures, there is a two and four-year kind of schedule for these targets. So, as we receive more information and more historical data, and we understand where this performance, you know, management effort is going from the FHWA side and the V-Trans side, you can choose to do that in two years or in four years for all the other measures except safety. Safety, you have the ability every year.
And then, the, the report actually talked about how we were doing in Chittenden County, but it sounds like you're not quite, you're using the data you have, but you're not happy with that data.
Well, I presented just, because I presented the targets, the targets that you saw in that table is basically the same targets, the statewide targets that V-Trans had. So, I did not want, I mean, you, you did not approve of those. So, I'm just showing what was approved and submitted until now, which is only the V-Trans targets.
Well, I think you've got the tables in here.
I do, yeah, we do have information.
If we adopt these, this is how we stack up in terms of Chittenden County targets goals.
Right, right, right.
And it looks like most of them are meeting. There's just a few that were not.
Right.
But those are the ones you're trying to, the data isn't...
But if we adopt our statewide targets, so we are, you know, we're clear, if we adopt the statewide targets, then, you know, we are not, we are not looking at the MPO area separately. The MPO area is attached to the state.
Okay.
It is. I looked at that.
But wouldn't we, sorry.
Yeah.
This is the point of conversation we're still having. Wouldn't we still be asking V-Trans for Chittenden County data?
Yes.
And looking at that, or for all the measures every year?
Absolutely.
Just to kind of say, where, what's the point of performance measures if we're not going to evaluate performance against them?
Right.
So, we would get that data for our county. But in terms of how V-Trans reports the federal highway, it's a statewide measure then.
Exactly.
It's not really calling us out differently because we're...
Unless you adopted your own.
Unless we adopt our own. So, if we, if we adopt the statewide, you know, targets that V-Trans created for the whole state, then our area is included in the statewide. That's what I, you know, my point was. But you're right, we're going to be receiving all the data for the MPO area. We're going to be monitoring the data, and we're going to be coming back to you and presenting that data. And you can decide if you want to move forward with separate targets at some point.
Separate targets. If there's some, you know, I mean, much, whenever I have been looking at this over the last, you know, most, this year or the last six months or so, it's been, most of the value in us having a target would probably be bully pulpit. You know, we don't have, we don't have control of the money or can't, you know, we can't directly try to shift some of the things. But there could, there may be at some point some value in having that if you decide. But I think we're kind of like, we're so early in this process that it seems to make sense right now.
Jeff, is the primary difficulty that we don't have enough observations?
We don't have enough data at this point. But it's also, you know, we don't really see the value of actually setting our own targets at this point. You know, we might in the future when we have more data.
Yeah, if we have, if we don't have enough observations, why would we set targets based on bogus data?
Yeah.
And that's our point.
That's what I do on revenues, but no, I don't want to do it on this.
We're using the best data that's available and we can get at a reasonable cost to do these analyses. But one of the things that we anticipate is, over time, additional data will become available. We'll start using the better data as these performance measures go over time. And, and that data would also be available to the MPO when that happens. So, you know, the hope is that there's really going to be a much better refinement of the data, and the quality of the data is going to be enhanced. But it's, it's like so many data sets that are collected at the national level, when you really look at them and really drill down in a small state like Vermont, they aren't particularly helpful. The statewide average, we, we feel like it was a reasonable amount of...
It's like the household employment survey. We, we have 1,200 households that rotate through 800 every month. As part of a national sample, it's great. But as for a state of Vermont, it still sucks.
So, just real quickly, these are the measures that are not really relevant to Vermont. Congestion reduction, environmental sustainability, and because of our size and also because we are in air quality attainment status, which is great. So, and the reduced project delivery delays, there are no projects, measures right now. They're probably going to be developing measures in the future. And then at that point, we're going to be looking at targets.
Are we waiting on the rulemaking on that?
Is that? Rulemaking, we are, we are...
The federal rulemaking hasn't come out.
Yeah, we are waiting for the rulemaking on that. The next steps is for, to present this to the TAC, and the TAC will review and recommend to the board. We're going to come back to you in your next meeting in October, October 17th, to ask for your recommendation. But I gave you a sneak preview of what we're going to be recommending.
I don't always know that in advance, but...
Yeah. Yeah, sorry, I just, yeah. And so, that is the end of my presentation.
Well, just don't put Charlie in the position of having to edit something out.
Any further questions, comments? We'll have a chance to revisit this next month. Next item is Chair/Executive Director Report. One thing I would like to do at our annual meeting in June, we had announced some service awards, and the members who received those awards weren't there to actually receive them. So, I think that they're certainly entitled to some recognition and a, a fine certificate suitable for framing for 10 years of service to both the MPO and the RPC was Jim Donovan from Charlotte. Thank you for the service there. For 20 years of service with the MPO and the RPC, some guy named Mike O'Brien, who has to put up with me there.
He was at the annual meeting. You were at the annual meeting.
Then here, I'll take it back. And then also, 20 years of service with the MPO and the RPC, Andrea McAnney. All right, Charlie?
Yeah, just a few quick notes to share with you. One is, you may see, or if you haven't seen yet, you will see, I'm asking to get on each of your select board agendas. So, I've done maybe four or so so far. And thank you to those towns. And I'm also sending our annual town report or municipal report along with that. So, take a look at that when you get a chance. And I appreciate, yeah, if you are able, as Jeff mentioned, administrators that are there anyway, that's, that's good. I was in Richmond and Huntington this week, and Essex last week, and another town, I can't remember.
Oh, Charlotte, keep forgetting.
Yeah, you weren't there, Jim. You weren't there, and I missed you.
Tactical water.
I've forgotten to tell you. I'm going to go home soon. Commission on Act 250 revision, so they had a, their last workshop in Burlington last week. A few of us were there, and yes, quite a few people were there. I think they probably had about 80 people in the room, so that's good. And I, I think I'll just use that to kind of make a note that they are coming up with recommendations at some point at the end of this calendar year. I think December 15th is our deadline. And I think we've been having some conversation at the Executive Committee about probably asking for interest in being on an ad hoc committee of the RPC to react to their recommendations. So, if you're interested in that, you know, just, you know, let me know after the meeting or, or send me a note or, or send Chris a note. So, that would be good. And then... And then, they also, in those workshops, they're, they've offered to give us the materials to run a similar workshop, if we wanted to do that, with like, if there was a small group, or a couple of small groups of the board that wanted to do that. I didn't want to just say no out of the box, so I'm bringing it to the table. Let me know if you're interested in that. They're looking for comments by October 10th or 12th, something like that. So, we'd have to do that, like, you'd have to let me know soon if you want to try to get together and do that, or run through their workshop. So, Governor's Cabinet for a day. You probably have seen in the media, the governor brought his cabinet to different counties around the state. I believe Chittenden County is the last county he's coming to next Wednesday, so-
No, you were not last.
Oh, not last? Oh.
Does he go to the gorse?
He's in the middle.
Right in the middle? Oh, really? Oh, somewhere I heard that. I apologize. Boy, I was like, I was putting all kinds of emotion on that tape.
You didn't take the best for last.
No, no, that's not the way I was thinking about it, but. So, anyway, so, anyway, there may be some opportunities, and the agendas are clearly getting put together by different state agencies, because the governor comes, but then each of the agencies also does their own tracks, and so, there may be multiple things going on, and I'm not sure where they're going to land, and which agency's going to land where. The Commissioner of Public Service is going to come here to meet with us at probably that afternoon. If you're interested in that, let me know, we could plug you into that. I think we're going to meet with Secretary Flynn that morning to review probably the, the Long Range Transportation Plan and transportation issues. I'm not sure where that will be. I think I've said like, I can't remember, 9:15 or, yeah, 9:15, I think, that morning. If you're interested in that, let me know. And so, anyway, if you're interested in talking to an agency, we may get a heads up as to where they will be sometime that day, but it's a little chaotic at the moment. Building Homes Together, we haven't talked about that lately. There's going to be a press conference on October 10th to kind of give the latest status report on that. I'll share that information with the next board meeting, if you don't come to that, and we'll share the announcement on that press conference. There's going to be, we're holding another housing convening, October 29th. Regina just sent that notice out a couple hours ago, so if you were on that list, heads up. And then finally, just Planning Seed Legislative Breakfast, we're working on a date in early December that hopefully won't conflict with the Bankers Association this time, but, and I think Emma's working that out, so stay tuned, and I'm hoping maybe at our November board meeting, we'll actually get a chance to have some time to talk about, you know, preview the substance of what we'll talk about at the legislative breakfast. That's it.
All right. You have a number of committee reports and minutes in the packet. Are there any members' items or other business? Yes, Jeff?
I just want to make a pitch for you to invest the 45 minutes to come get the MPO orientation. There's a lot of alphabet soup. There's a lot of things that govern our annual work program, particularly if you're a municipal member and you have a responsibility to vote. Just announce we're going to have two more, one next month, and then one at the November meeting. It's 45 minutes, you get fed, and it's good information.
Pizza next time.
Well, I'm going to make the pitch. If we, if we can't get people to come, I'm going to suggest that we up the ante on the dinner.
Any other business? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn? Second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed. Thank you very much, folks. Have a good evening.
Thank you all for your patience.